Good evening, everyone. I will call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for our work session at 5:01 PM on Monday, October 21st. And we'll start with review of agenda and items on consent. And I will note that councilors Linville and council president Oquavall are attending by Zoom. So does do any of the councilors have any comments on the items on consent or the agenda? Seeing none, any councillor concerns in advance of the meeting? We'll start with our pre-council work session, the industrial land readiness in Basalt Creek. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and councilors. My name is Cindy Looksoy, Associate Planner. And we are here tonight to seek the council's input on the draft economic inventory and land use analysis for the first phase of the Wilsonville Industrial Land Readiness Project. To my right is Nicole Underwood with Eco Northwest, and Dan Pauly is joining us as well. The Wilsonville Industrial Land Readiness Project, Willer for short, has two phases, which together will support attracting high-quality industry and economic opportunity to Wilsonville. The first phase of the project is currently underway, and it's focused on the Basalt Creek and West Railroad planning areas in northwest Wilsonville. Basalt Creek is outlined in red, and West Railroad is outlined in yellow on this slide. The two future industrial areas are subject of the Basalt Creek Concept Plan jointly prepared with the city of Tuolleton and adopted by Wilsonville in 2018. The first phase of the Willer project lays the foundation for moving the concept plan area to an industrial development-ready status, thus enabling the city to accept development applications for industrial projects and realizing the area's economic development potential. There are several tasks involved in the first phase of the Willer project, as listed on this slide. The city has contracted with Eco Northwest, DKS Associates, Pacific Habitat Services, and Consoor to accomplish the tasks, most of which are already underway, in consultation with city staff. The focus of tonight's presentation is on the draft economic inventory and land use analysis prepared by Eco Northwest. The analysis provides area-specific foundational information about economic activities in the Basalt Creek area in the context of local and regional markets, and what industries may be expected to locate in the planning area in the future. And Nicole is going to take it from here as we go through their summary of the analysis thus far.
Thank you, Cindy. You can go to the next slide. So since 2018, when the concept plan was adopted, significant changes have occurred. There have been major economic shifts at the national, state, and local levels, and there have been changes in land use in Basalt Creek as well, as Washington County continues to approve developments consistent with county zoning. So Basalt Creek now hosts a number of contractor establishments, and while providing jobs and economic activity, they are not the types of development or commerce envisioned in the Basalt Creek Concept Plan. So as Wilsonville now works to complete its implementation steps to make the Basalt Creek area development-ready, the city needs to account for these changes. So to address this, the key focus of Echo's work is answering the question, what has happened since 2018, and how do those changes impact implementation? This analysis, along with Echo's subsequent work, will help the city make informed decisions on zoning designations, inform infrastructure planning, and identify policy interventions to facilitate desired development. So we start by looking at national and state trends, which is important because they influence regional and local markets. Since the COVID-19 pandemic, the U.S. has seen strong job growth. Employment increased by 21% between 2020 and 2024, and this growth, total employment, has surpassed pre-pandemic levels. And so while Oregon has also seen overall job growth since 2020, it is lagging behind this national trend, and over the last year actually saw a slight employment decline of 0.1%. Moving on to Wilsonville, Wilsonville has a strong employment, a strong industrial employment base, with its three largest sectors being manufacturing, wholesale trade, and construction. These sectors make up 43% of jobs in Wilsonville and 22% of jobs in the tri-county region. This focus on industrial jobs sets Wilsonville apart and highlights its distinct role in the regional economy. So over the past decade, Wilsonville's employment has grown by 18%. This is slightly faster than the 17% growth rate seen at the tri-county level. Wilsonville's job growth has largely been driven by growth in construction jobs, administration and waste management, wholesale trade, and professional services. And then in contrast, Wilsonville did experience a slight decline in manufacturing over that 2012 to 2022 period. Next slide, please. So moving on to the office market, since the pandemic, the office market nationally has been declining, as businesses reevaluate their need for space in light of hybrid and work-from-home trends. There has been negative net absorption, as more businesses are leaving office spaces than occupying them over the past two and a half years. New construction is down, with fewer new offices being built and some existing office spaces being repurposed. We're seeing a shrinking inventory nationally. And then certain types of office spaces are outperforming others, so tenants are preferring or favoring high-quality buildings, such as office spaces in ideal locations or that have different types of amenities. Looking ahead, the office sector is expected to stabilize in the latter half of 2025 as adjusting to this hybrid work schedule, and this should set a new baseline for office space requirements. And then the investment prospect for suburban and central city office space has fallen between poor and fair in recent years. However, the investment prospect for medical space has risen steadily and is just below good. So to better understand how Wilsonville fits within the broader region, we, when examining real estate market trends, we compare the city to these two geographies, the Portland Metro and the I-5 South submarket boundary, which encompasses the industrial areas in Sherwood into Tuolleton. So the office markets in the Portland Metro region have generally aligned with national trends. The Portland metro has had very high office vacancy rates, negative net absorption, and overall low leasing activity. However, the regional office market is not uniform. Suburban office markets are performing better than downtown. Wilsonville, on the other hand, has had generally lower vacancy rates than the broader region, although the end of a few leases have created spikes in that rate, including in 2024. Rents have increased over time and are now on par with the Portland Metro region for the first time in a decade, but they are still below the I-5 South submarket. And Wilsonville has not escaped the negative net absorption trends, as companies are reevaluating their need for space. Next slide, please. So the industrial market has fared better post-COVID, although nationally, the industrial market is strong, although growth is decelerating relative to the highs of 2021 and 2022. Looking ahead, experts predict continued industrial market growth, although slower than in the past few years, and industrial demand is expected to be driven by growth in manufacturing and reshoring, reshoring being the trend of production coming back to the U.S. And overall, the industrial market outlook remains positive, with investment prospects across various secondary markets coalescing toward a similar prospect rating of just below good, as you can see on this chart. The industrial market in Wilsonville and Portland generally aligns with these national trends. The Portland Metro region has seen strong growth between 2021 and 2023, but that growth is decelerating. Investors remain confident in the region's market, in the market's long-term health, particularly due to the significant investments in the region's semiconductor manufacturing sector. Wilsonville also shows a strong industrial market. The vacancy rate has remained below 6% over the past decade, for the most part, and is currently at 2.4%, which is below the broader region. Wilsonville has generally had increasing rents in the industrial space and is, has rents above the broader market. And notably, the Wilsonville market has had limited industrial development compared to nearby cities. This trend is likely due to Wilsonville's shortage of industrial development-ready land and large parcels. This was a view supported by some of our interviews with local developers, brokers, and economic development organizations. So industrial development along the I-5 South submarket has recently concentrated in Tuolleton and Sherwood, which you can see in this graph, with Wilsonville falling behind, likely due to Wilsonville's lack of industrial-ready, development-ready land. Many speculative industrial developers are seeking larger sites, as demonstrated by recent developments in Sherwood and Tuolleton on sites larger than 10 acres. Local developers report that most of the industrial demand is coming from existing regional businesses rather than out-of-state companies. And so these local industrial users are primarily looking to expand or upgrade their facilities. Many are expressing a desire to be outside of the city of Portland and Mount Noma County, some citing challenges with safety and the higher rate of taxation. So as I mentioned, we did conduct interviews with stakeholders, including Business Oregon, Greater Portland Inc., local brokers, developers, and landowners, to get a better understanding of the demand for industrial space, as well as the barriers to development in the broader Portland Metro area. So while some of the challenges listed here are directly applicable to Basalt Creek, some are, some are a little less applicable than others, but they will, they all represent important considerations for the city as it prepares the area for development. So here we have site readiness. Many sites in the Portland Metro area lack necessary transportation and utility infrastructure to immediately accommodate industrial users' power availability. There is immediate or quick access to heavy power is currently one of the biggest barriers that industrial users are citing. Many existing structures do not meet the needs of modern industrial users, so you have outdated existing buildings. We also heard that there's some lack of intermediate industrial spaces, so some of your users between that 20,000 and 40,000-square-foot space needs have limited options. We've heard that zoning, not all zoning is aligned with desired development, so sometimes the landowners or city's vision for an area does not align with the diverse needs of the users. Fragmented land ownership, areas with multiple small parcels can be challenging, as it takes time and money to aggregate those. Incompatible neighboring uses, the presence of non-industrial uses in close proximity can preclude development out of concern for either potential or future conflicts. And then we also heard some challenges around requirements for connectivity. So in some cases, required road, access roads can deter large industrial developers because the roads may decrease the size of the site. And then additionally, some industrial users who prioritize confidentiality and security may prefer to not have public access. And so what is Wilsonville's portion of Basalt Creek look like today? Currently, it's still under Washington County zoning, which allows a variety of low-intensity uses. The area has limited development. Much of that development is in contractor establishments, which includes storage of equipment and vehicles. And while important, these lands host limited employment and assess property value much less than what was envisioned in the concept plan. So Wilsonville's portion of Basalt Creek has the composition shown here. It has about 469 acres and 90 tax lots. 10 of those lots host covered employment. In 2022, there were about 270 covered employees in the area, with an average wage of about $86,000. This is higher than both the tri-county and city average wage of about $74,000, so this suggests that the jobs there are relatively high-paying. Employment density on lots with covered employment was about 4.4 employees per acre as of 2022. Most of the lots do not have any covered employment. This is in contrast to the concept plan's vision of 18.5 employees per acre. And then due to the prevalence of contractor establishments, many lots have minimal building improvements, and so the improvement-to-land-value ratio is low and has changed a little over the past decade. Basalt Creek also has many key advantages that do make it attractive for industrial development. It's centrally located in the south metro. It is located in a large contiguous cluster of existing and planned industrial employment areas, including in Wilsonville, Tuolleton, and Sherwood. There are large areas of contiguous land ownership, and you do have some property owners who are interested in developing or selling for redevelopment. It has excellent access to I-5, 205, and Highway 217. There's access to an educated workforce, both as a part of the Portland Metro labor shed and the Mid Valley labor shed. And then there's long-term growth projections for employment and population in the southwest Portland metro area. However, there are also challenges that could hinder development, so existing zoning allows low-density uses, and this has resulted in these low-density uses. It is important to note that some of these, these uses are generating potentially substantial income for owners, which could disincentivize redevelopment. This is something that Echo is exploring in a subsequent task. There may be challenges financing and constructing the new infrastructure necessary for development. There is a mix of both large and small properties, lots throughout Basalt Creek, and the time and cost for aggregation could be a barrier. There are a lot of natural constraints, development constraints, including wetlands and slopes. And then there's a growing power demands for industrial users, and there's uncertainty on timing and capacity for additional services. So despite these challenges, Basalt Creek's longstanding vision of Basalt Creek as an industrial area does align well with current market trends, which show strong demand for industrial space, both locally and nationally. Stakeholders did point to Wilsonville's potential to attract a diverse range of industrial businesses, including the semiconductor, semiconductor sector, supply chain. This is because it's, you know, it's proximity to other semiconductor clusters, potential for larger industrial sites, and then access to a skilled workforce. Clean tech, including battery technology, this is a growing field encompassing renewable energy, energy efficiency, sustainable manufacturing, those kind of things. Battery tech, which is crucial for electric vehicles, is already located in Wilsonville. Advanced manufacturing is another, is another promising sector. This could include things like robotics and 3D printing. Once again, Wilsonville's skilled workforce and proximity to tech hubs could make it attractive. You have distribution and logistics. Wilsonville is, you know, near major transportation routes, and it's close to Portland, which could make it an ideal location. And then data centers, with available land and potential for a reliable power source. Wilsonville could be attractive for data center development. Being close to Portland's tech companies is also an additional advantage for that type of industry. So in conclusion, Basalt Creek is well-positioned for many types of industrial users, but there are challenges to realizing this potential, as previously discussed and listed here. It will be essential for Wilsonville to carefully balance its development goals for Basalt Creek with these market realities. So while the city may have preferences for certain types of businesses, being overly selective could potentially deter development altogether. This is particularly important, given the current climate. The concept plan originally envisioned office space within each district, with its highest share in the high-tech employment district. This office space was anticipated to be in connection with industrial users. However, both nationally and regionally, demand for office space has been declining. So while office space will likely still be a part of Basalt Creek, it might be a lower share than originally envisioned. Nationally, we do know there's a strong demand for industrial space. However, Oregon's employment growth has lagged national trends, and this could temper, which could moderate this trend locally. Developers must also be able to finance their developments. So discussions with local developers and brokers highlighted the importance of allowing a mix of users, users for better financing opportunities. This is particularly important for speculative development, where the end user is not known. Overly prescriptive zoning that designates specific uses can be more challenging to finance, because banks see risk and concern if they perceive the list of potential users as too small. So in conclusion, the city, city is going to need to navigate these challenges while working toward its vision of Basalt Creek, of a higher density, a higher-density district with a diverse mix of industrial users, high-wage jobs, and enhanced tax base and increased community prosperity. And with that, I'm going to give it back to Cindy.
Thank you, Nicole. So the Planning Commission was briefed about the Willer project at their September 11th, 2024 meeting, and provided input on the draft economic inventory and land use analysis at their October 9th meeting. So they've had two sessions. Feedback provided by the Planning Commission focused on some key concerns, including potential land use conflicts between future industrial use in Wilsonville, south of the Basalt Creek Parkway, and residential use in Tuolleton. Transportation and infrastructure challenges, particularly related to when improvement of Southwest Day Road will occur to accommodate increased use, and how this will be funded. Coordination with transit and changes in bus routes to respond to development in the area. Challenges of infrastructure provision to serve the area, as well as availability and cost of power to serve future users. Office space needs were also a concern, and whether there will be more of a trend to return to in-person work than predicted, and as well as the importance of monitoring and flexing with the market and development trends as implementation occurs in Basalt Creek. And then contractors' establishments, and how to control or moderate their proliferation and expansion in the area. As mentioned earlier, the, the economic inventory and land use analysis is only one component of the Phase 1 work, and it will be combined with outcomes of the buildable land inventory, site suitability analysis, analysis of contractors' establishments, natural resource assessment, and revisions to the local street access plan, to inform zoning designations, infrastructure planning, and policy interventions to maximize economic opportunities and facilitate desired development in Basalt Creek. And at the city council work session in December, we will present findings and seek input about some of these additional analyses, with the goal of moving toward draft code amendments to be considered in 2025. And with that, we just have a couple of questions for council, including whether you have any questions or comments about this component of the, the work and the findings, as well as if there, if you found anything surprising or that changes your view of how the city should be thinking about Basalt Creek and planning and implementation of the concept plan. And I think that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer questions, and we'd love to hear your input.
Okay, thank you. We had, that was a good summary of the very detailed analyses in the packet. I see that councillor Linville has her hand raised.
Thank you. I do have a couple of comments. This was an incredibly detailed report, and I thank you for that. What occurred to me, and it has been an issue that I think we've discussed in the past, is the lack of large parcels. And I think this has been discussed in the, in the analysis report. And I, I think with the current 90 tax lots in this prime development area, I think unless we can impact that some way, we're going to continue to have that lagging behind our neighbor communities. It would be interesting to have some information on how Sherwood and Tuolleton have approached that and were able to get some of the larger parcels. I recognize that leaving the aggregation of those parcels to a particular developer, it may not be the best strategy to use. But I believe that other cities are utilizing some other strategies to aggregate some of the parcels. And particularly, I believe that the Port of Portland is engaged with some of the communities and being able to purchase land and land bank some of those parcels, so that they could be aggregated at a later date. So I wonder, I know we're not looking particularly at strategies in this point, at this point, but I didn't want that to go by the wayside without it being considered. And then the other thing is that the, the report indicates that the health, healthcare and medical community may be a, an emerging or maybe more likely to be a development group, and yet we don't put that in our final recommendations. We've, we, it kind of got lost along there, and I think it might, might be good to add that, that part back. And then my, just my, my final comment is that I think this is a very important discussion for the future of Wilsonville, our citizens, and our workforce. These truly are highway, the potential for high-wage jobs. And as much as we might talk about some other kinds of businesses that would come to Wilsonville, while we're not, while we're not trying to prohibit or dissuade or not support any of those businesses, I think we do need to be very concerned about providing and a focus on high-wage jobs. These jobs will, as, as proven in the current status and the report projects, these are upwards of $80,000 to $90,000 a year jobs for, for workers. So I think, I think it's very important for us. I did have a little bit of concern when I saw the potential for the roads. And given the comments that are being made about not being specific about, too selective about industries, I think we also need to be careful about projecting where roads might go if we can come up with some aggregated larger parcels. Those, it may not, I would hate for the roads to be there or put in and, and us eliminate maybe a potential large industrial use in the area, just because we've moved forward with roads. But I think that's preliminary, and I get that. So those are really my comments. Thank you very much for your presentation and, and synthesizing that down to, to, to a workable discussion.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you for the presentation. I actually have a couple of other questions, and I do agree with councillor Linville that we, it's important not to be shortsighted and think about 20, 30, 40 years, 50 years down the road. I, I look at Sherwood, and I look at some of the construction that's going on there. That, to me, looks at, at future opportunity for us. I'd love to be able to see that type of industrial development for us in, in Wilsonville and the Tuolton area and the Basalt Creek area. And also, I am concerned about the transportation element of it. They have to go hand-in-hand, because even if Day Road gets fixed and you have the 124th Street extension built, you still have a problem with I-5. So all of that needs to be at least woven together at some point in this report, because I think the report is well and good, but it, it also begs a lot of questions. And I feel like there's an opportunity to tie some of that together in some scenarios, in what-if scenarios. What if we were to move forward with this development, but we were find, we were to find that the I-5 or the Boone Bridge project stalled, just like the I-5 bridge did going into Washington State? I would love to see those different scenarios played out and how that it would impact us. I would also like to see when we will be updating this again, because we do know that we're in a, in an interesting market time from financing and costs, but what will it look like in five years? Or is there going to be a revisit and an update to this? And then finally, is a question for you all. And can you back up just a little bit and talk about the relationship and how you all, how the city of Wilsonville partnered with Tuolton on this? Because I think that's really exciting that we, we built that partnership.
So as far as planning for Basalt Creek, that was a joint planning effort between Tuolton.
2018, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what the report says.
Yeah. And since then, you know, we've continued to, obviously, Tuolton's going a very different direction from what Wilsonville is, as far as a lot of the land use there is residential. And we have continued to monitor those developments as they come in. And we have continued to monitor those developments as they come in, particularly related to traffic and transportation, and how that is impacting roads in Wilsonville, particularly Boone's Ferry and Day Road.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. And so we do continue to monitor that. We're also, you know, looking at and considering what kinds of impacts those developments will have on downstream impacts. So for instance, related to stormwater or water and sewer, and because everything flows south towards us. And so we're, we're continuing to look at that. I don't know if Dan wants to add any additional, it's kind of an ongoing, evolving process.
Yeah, we don't have any immediate jurisdictional neighbors, and so this is our first experience with that. So it was a process, but I think the partnerships continue, and both, we have communication with Toowallaton staff, and we monitor. And I think it's in terms of that relationship between the two, there is a Parkway, so there is a strong boundary, kind of an edge between the two cities as it's built out, which will provide, so I mean, you're not going to have a backyard neighbor between a house and a, and an industrial development. There's always going to be a major road in between.
And could you then educate me about the 124th Extension? And that's proposed, and I see that in some of the drawings here, that, you know, that's in the future. Has that, is, is ODOT on board with that? Is that, is that, is that just a very high strategic and conceptual planning, or is that really part of what the, you know, more fleshed out for the future?
Yeah, I believe Zach is here. If, Zach, do you have a moment to take this one? He's our, he's our resident expert on this topic.
And the only reason I bring these up is because I believe if I'm asking these questions, other people are too.
Good evening. Zach Weigl, City Engineer. And if, are you talking about the Basalt Creek Parkway Extension?
Yeah.
Between-
Yeah.
Between Graham's Ferry and Boone's Ferry? That is, it's in design right now.
Okay.
I think they're at like 60% design, and they're trying to put together a construction funding package. So we've been participating as staff with, in the design of the road.
So that is, that is that, is that, that city, county, state?
That's a county project.
Okay, so it's a county project. It's in design right now, and that would tie into Boone's Ferry?
That's right.
Which would then connect onto I-5?
Uh, I-5 through Elgson Road, yeah.
Right, okay, okay. It's a lot of traffic. It's a lot of traffic.
Well, that, and that has been in planning for how many years, just to guess?
20 years?
And thus, that's my point, is, you know, it, it sounds like it's in planning and it's in design now?
That's right, yeah.
So there have been, right, have right-aways been acquired?
Um, I don't believe they've gotten that far.
Okay, okay, great. Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, just a, a couple of quick comments. Thank you for your report. There's a lot of information there, and I just, you know, concur with what the other councillors have said. I'm really, really excited. It's not very often that a city gets an opportunity to have a large piece of land where we can plan and think about what kind of uses and, and facilities we'd like to go. So I love seeing that this planning is going in there. We got to do a tour maybe a month or two ago, and that always is really helpful to get out into the areas to see firsthand, you know, what, what are we talking about? And it's my understanding that the uses are changing, and that's really important to build buildings that are going to be flexible for whatever use can come in. And I think you highlighted that in your report. So, and I'm also just really excited because the location, being so close to the transportation routes, is just such a great opportunity for Wilsonville, that traffic won't be coming through our residential areas. It would be pretty direct connections to the highway. So, thank you.
Councilor Acquavale, Council President Acquavale.
Thank you. And thank you for the report. I appreciate the comments by my fellow council members. I just had a few things that I was hoping you could provide a little more detail on and help flush out my understanding of them a little more clearly. In the report, there was, and in your presentation tonight, some comment about the challenge of, or the, our demand for the area for industrial uses, and that that could be, or hold some uncertainty. I wondered if you could kind of explain what that means more, and how do we potentially help problem solve that? And then the other piece that I hope you could talk a little bit more about was when you had the discussion on office space. There was a mention that, you know, the patterns that we're seeing happen with office space has some variation for high-quality buildings. I wondered if you could further define what high quali, what qualifies something as high-quality buildings? What characteristics are we looking for there? I think that's important information for us to have as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll start with the power. So we're hearing, this is, this is a, a newer consideration. I mean, power's always been a thing, but with AI and different industries requiring more and more power, it's becoming a bigger and bigger deal. And so what we're hearing is uncertainty that businesses will be able to get enough power where they locate. Some of your big, I, I, Data Center is a really good example, because their data need, their power needs can really span the spectrum. A small one might need, I think I was reading, it's like five to 10 megawatts, but a large one can need 50-plus. And you're, to be able to access something like 50-plus, and I think megawatts is the correct term, of power, most sites are, there's no sites really that are available right now with that. You have to plan for it with PGE. We actually just had a discussion with PGE about what that might look like, and really the answer was you need to be coordinating with them regularly to help them understand what types of users you're anticipating getting in this area so that they can help ensure that there's enough power. But they do not bring excess power to an area without a planned user. And I don't know if that makes a lot of, I, I'm not sure if I'm being super clear, but if you had somebody who was like, no, we need, we need X amount of power, then PGE could work with you to potentially address that. Right now, my understanding is that Basalt Creek has enough power to accommodate some of your, your general users. But if you had somebody who was a very high-needs user, you would need to coordinate more thoroughly with PGE. And I don't know if, if any of my team has anything else to say on that.
That's a great summary.
Okay.
Does this kind of put us in like chicken or the egg, what comes first sort of situation? Or does it just prompt the importance of having kind of like some courting of what the potential users might be?
This is-
Early stages?
Apologize, didn't mean to interrupt. Yes, this is, I, I think this is coming up across Oregon, and we're hearing it across the Portland metro a lot, too, is you have an interested, an interested high-power-needs user, and they don't have access, and it could take four years more to get that kind of power. And so where are they going? I think that this is a broader statewide conversation. I know it's going on at the state level as well. And so to kind of get at what you're saying, yes, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg. I, I think it underlines the importance of having open communication with PGE and really, and, and with, if, if there are potential industrial usage, if there is a big one coming in, it's, it's a longer planning period, and we need to be aware of that. I don't think I can answer too much more than that, because it is, it is the same problem we're hearing. And we're still trying to kind of navigate what that looks like in practice, because this is a more recent challenge, if that makes sense.
Did you get all of your questions answered, Councilor?
I have a follow-up. Go ahead.
There's still the, Councilor Acquavale's question about what is a high-quality office building?
Oh, so I think this is in, in relation to the national trends that we were talking about, and what this particular report was referencing is, it's essentially your nicer, higher-quality, like newer buildings, so your Class A office space, a higher quality. What do those amenities look like? It could vary. When we talk about an ideal location, it's, it's hard to kind of exactly quantify it. What we are seeing in the Portland region is offices are moving to the suburban areas, and it could be for a variety of reasons. At the national level, it is for a variety of reasons. I think when I was reading this, a third of office markets are actually, a third of areas are doing better, and then you've got a greater decline in these central cities. If, if you would, I, I would need to look a little bit more deeply into what exactly they were referencing, and I'm happy to do that and add some more clarity to the report.
Yeah, I'd just be, I'd be curious on that, because I think it's good information for us to have overall in the city, you know, beyond, I guess, just this, this specific area. But I know, you know, with our Coffee Creek, we've done kind of a, a different form-based code approach. We've made some modifications to that as we, as we try to really dial in something that would work best. And I just, I just wondered if we had a little bit more criteria of, of what that looks like, and then how does it overlay with what we're putting out there? Yeah.
So that sounds like something we want more information on. And so I know we have a comment also from Councilor Dunwell, and then from Councilor Berry, and then I'll have, and, and really questions and things you want the, the team to dive into more before we go on. Got it? Okay, Councilor Berry.
Well, just on the office buildings, are you envisioning big office buildings, or is it more office accessory use to the industrial use? For the, for the Basalt Creek?
Yes, I can respond to that. So I think it's the latter. You know, we, we've always assumed it wouldn't be just like an office building that had nothing to do with industrial, but, but more associated with, especially in those high-tech employment areas. So I guess something similar to, say, like a Siemens, you know, Mentor Graphics, or, you know, that has a substantial office component, but there's still an industrial or manufacturing type use.
Thank you. President, thank you too.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to just wrap up by referring back to the tour that some of us got to go on with, with a developer and some of the staff. And it is, but some of the things we discussed are reflected here on page, oh, it's item, it's page 47 in the packet, under Barriers to Industrial Development. And that is the overly, the, the, the suggestion, and you make it here, the concept of going to more flexible zoning, so that when prospective tenants are looking at financing to occupy the site, they have a broader set of potential clients to describe to their financiers. And so you've described, and we heard that as a big interest, at least by some people. And I see it referenced here. So can you reflect on what are we going, you know, what needs to be done to further explore that tactic?
I think there's quite a bit that needs to be done. I imagine that'll be a continuing conversation, because there's kind of two sides of that as well. You want to be flexible enough to, to, to allow the appropriate users, but also not so flexible that you inadvertently have some, something else come in that will prevent the user, the desired users.
I understand, yeah.
So it's a, it's a, it's balancing, and I think that's really, will be a focus as we go into our zoning and refinements, is that need to strike the right balance.
And in, I just came from a meeting last week of the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, and then also the ELO League of Oregon Cities Meeting, and we heard there also about the power need and potential for alternative power sources or battery storage that may help the state. But, but that is, I heard that over and over as a big need. And also that I understand there's, across the board in Oregon, there's an interest in finding ways to make our state, which includes Wilsonville, more appealing to out-of-state investors, because they also were, we also heard the same discussions about, it's great that we're seeing some industries locate and can be in Wilsonville and Sherwood and so forth, but often they came from someplace not too far away, leaving that place vacant. And then, so I know that our Economic Development Manager participates in statewide conversations, and we're members of, you know, Greater Portland, Inc., but I think that needs, you know, as a state, we need to have assistance with how to be ready for these potential large investors. And no one city like Wilsonville can cover all the costs. There seemed to be statewide understanding of that also. And some of the ideas you have mentioned here, like, that would help us, which would be aggregating smaller parcels, and I think it would be good to put in this document priority to underscore our request to the State of Oregon to help cities with, with that, which is really considered like an infrastructure cost. And then, you know, we, we really are already on record with prioritizing with our state legislators and with our League of Oregon Cities colleagues, that we really do need that we, Wilsonville, and also other cities like us, definitely need support from the State of Oregon in order to be able to make the limited number of acres that are available for industrial development usable. So maybe, I'm just thinking that should be elevated here. And we have various consortiums that we can activate and lean into. You're muted.
Thank you. I know. I, I'm trying to lower my hand for you. One of the things I just wanted to emphasize for our citizens and that are listening or participating in other ways, that the city does not purchase this land, nor does the city build the buildings. These are, our obligation is to, I think as the mayor said and Council President Acquavale said, our obligation is to really make it attractive for purchasers of the land and developers to develop the, this property. So I just wanted that to be really clear, because sometimes it sounds like we might be using tax dollars to do some of these things, and, and, and we are not in terms of, of building buildings, what size they'll be, what quality they'll be. Those all come from developers that would go through our regular process of approval through, through our city processes. So, and I guess I would say that as we develop code, which in the, in the next steps, that we, I would agree that we try and make that as, as friendly as possible so that we can assist developers in that way by removing barriers that the city might otherwise have. And I know from the report that there may, there are waiting, there are some owners that are already ready and waiting for those codes to begin developing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Linville. Councilor Dunwell?
I do have just one follow-up comment, and it's-
I do have just one follow up comment, and it's in general, and it's more to anyone that may be listening to this and, and thinking about what we're trying to do here as a concept. A healthy city is a city that has high, well, high wage jobs. It has a blend of residential, but it also has industrial and light industrial and office, and then all of the supporting services that are, that are there. This is part of that really wonderful concept. We are a long ways away from this becoming a reality, but that is how you build the future of a healthy city. It's not just by building a lot of new homes or a lot of things like that. You have to do that, obviously, to house people, but this is why we're also thinking about this now. So I'm excited that EcoNorth Rus did this. I do believe that will need to be updated before it's finalized because we are in a very fluid environment. But overall, I think that the idea that we're moving forward on this and thinking about tomorrow is really great. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then one, one last point for the staff is I, I appreciate the comment that the city does not build buildings. We don't speculate on real estate buildings and so forth. However, as we've discussed in the previous few months, there are cases where a city would aggregate some small parcels and landbag them so that it was then available to this industry that wants to come in and, and have 40 acres, for example. So maybe just elaborate on that a little bit, please?
I'll be brief. I'll start by saying that other jurisdictions in the region have done that to success.
Okay. Thank you. I know we're over time, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that will bring us to the next section on Frog Pond East and South Infrastructure Funding Plan. We have 60 minutes for this. That's why we have such a long pre-council work session.
All right, so switching to the next topic. Again, Dan Polly, I'm the City's Planning Manager. And with me for this presentation is Amy Pepper, the City's Development Engineering Manager. And as the council well knows, we've been talking a lot about Frog Pond over the last number of years. And really since the council's adoption of, of a master plan for Frog Pond East and South, in 2022, we've been working on implementation, making that master plan a reality. There's been a number of steps. We've adopted TSB amendments. The Planning Commission recently made recommendations to the city council, which they'll consider in November for development code to implement the master plan. And one of those other steps is to develop an infrastructure funding plan that will guide how the different needed infrastructure will be built. So what we will hit on today, talking about the infrastructure funding plan, is the background and more context. Then we'll get into some details of the assumptions that have been made, what the different funding strategies are, that are available are, and finally have questions and discussion. For those listening that may not be familiar with Frog Pond East and South, the area specifically we're talking about is on the east side of Stafford Road, north of Advance Road. So east of where homes have been being built in recent years in Frog Pond, which we call Frog Pond West. So that area, north of Advance Road, we call Frog Pond East. And then south of Advance Road, kind of circling around Meriding Creek Middle School, is what we call Frog Pond South. So these are the two areas. And something to note about Frog Pond East versus South, there are some different considerations when we start talking about infrastructure and funding infrastructure out here that come into play. And you'll note, we'll talk a lot about in our discussion tonight, Stafford Road, Advance Road, as well as 60th, which are some of the southwest 60th Avenue, which are some of the major roads in this area. So, infrastructure planning has been ongoing for quite some time as we go through the different steps and iterations to create a plan and implementation steps for development in this growth area. The area plan, which was adopted in 2015, included some thoughts about infrastructure and planned infrastructure and kind of abroad what strategies may be used to build that infrastructure. 2017, with the Frog Pond West master plan, there was a specific infrastructure funding plan adopted with that. They took, they took a approach that was appropriate to Frog Pond West. There are some different characteristics there. So then Frog Pond East and South. And so we're not doing exactly what was done in West because both lessons learned and also there's just some aspects, such as the size of parcels and different, the variety of projects that are different. The Frog Pond East and South master plan did adopt what all the infrastructure would be to support the, the expected land uses out there. And then that was subsequently adopted in the Transportation System Plan Update in 2023. So we're not talking about infrastructure plan itself that's been previously adopted. Really, the focus tonight is how to fund it. And with that in, and it's a strategy. This is kind of looking at a toolkit or kind of a comprehensive plan level of how to fund it. Subsequently, with each development, we'll get into the nitty gritty, running the numbers of how, how, how individual projects will be funded, individual. And Amy will get more into that later. So with that, I wanted to go into what are some unique aspects of both East and South that really impact how we think about funding infrastructure? One of the most important things of Frog Pond East is it's mostly large ownership. A vast majority of the land is under two different ownerships with a few smaller, with, I think it's three different smaller parcels, but the vast majority are split about half north to south as two ownerships. So that takes, that's a lot different. You do have a BPA power line corridor that goes through the middle of it, as well as there's a lot of creeks and creek canyons and a lot of wildlife areas in, in the master plan area. There are long frontages, both for Stafford Road and Advance Road. You have the commercial Main Street, which is something that came up through the area plan, through the master planning to be in this area. And when we talk infrastructure, particularly sanitary sewer, we often look at pump stations. There are actually three pump stations needed in this area, but each of these, because of the larger ownership, would be, serve one developer's land. So they're not being shared by different developers, per se. Frog Pond South, you're looking at most of the development coming off southwest 60th Avenue. For the most part, the parcels are much smaller. So you're talking more three, five, even some one acre parcels compared to those large parcels Frog Pond East. Something significant to note here is the infrastructure and that, and how it impacts the, sorry, the topography and how it impacts infrastructure. The land really slopes to the south. So when you talk, start talking about sewer or anything that flows with gravity, you need to pump it back up to Advance Road. And so when you have those smaller parcels, that, there's that intersection of the, the amount of different ownership, but everything needs to flow to the south and then be pumped back up north. And also something we'll note here is unlike Frog Pond East, there's a lot of kind of frontages, such as the land owned by the school and for a future community park, as well as some homes that were recently developed on fairly small parcels that we don't expect to necessarily redevelop under, in the timeframe for build out of this project. So with that, I will turn it to Amy to carry it from there.
Thank you. Good evening. So the, since the area plan, infrastructure has been kind of categorized in three different buckets. One is the offsite infrastructure, that citywide infrastructure that will serve this area. We've got a couple of waterline crossings. We've got, you know, treatment plan upgrades that need to happen. We've got reservoirs. Those projects are anticipated to be funded separately through our capital improvement plan and through SDCs and are not part of this funding strategy. Similarly, for each development, we'll have onsite infrastructure. We'll have the street, the local streets and sidewalks and bike lanes and sewer mains and water mains and stormwater management. That is also not part of this funding strategy. Those are anticipated to be the developer's responsibility, and so we have those both off the plate. Next slide. What is included in the funding strategy is the funding for what we call framework projects. That's Stafford Road improvements, Advance Road improvements, 60th Avenue, south of Advance Road, Frog Pond South, there's a pump station, there's a storm main that goes down 60th that will serve a portion of Frog Pond East and Frog Pond South. And then there's some trails that go through the, the, both sections. Next slide. So in developing this funding plan, we had to make some assumptions about development. Next slide. So first, we're setting a baseline of setting up responsibilities. With development, there's always a developer responsibility. We call that the, the local portion. And the assumption that we made based on previous work and looking at our code was that the developer responsibility is 20 feet of pavement, the planter or the landscaping strip between the street and the sidewalk generally, five feet of sidewalk, and the eight inch size of a water main or sewer main. And anything above that is considered an oversized portion and the city responsibility. Do we skip a slide? Nope. Maybe go after. So based on that assumption, the baseline funding strategy that we have recommended for council, and this is based on our existing policies, is that the developer builds the infrastructure. They cover the portion that's their responsibility. They pay for that outright. And the cities, and they also build the portion that's the city's responsibility. And for paying, for building that portion that's the city's responsibility, they receive system development charge credits for the oversized portion. And that's what the baseline strategy is. And for this funding strategy, we tried to run that to the ground to see, does this work in this area? Does the math work out? Is there a cash flow issue? Next slide. We missed a slide.
Looking for the map, right?
Yeah, that's okay. So we had in looking at, maybe go back down, sorry. Not sure what happened to our presentation, so bear with us for a moment. Next slide. Yeah, nope. What's happening? Go down. Go back up. One more.
Okay.
All right. So in looking at the baseline funding strategy, we looked at the map that Dan provided of all of the parcels, and we met with developers, we've been meeting with developers about two years now, to talk about how do we get all of this stuff built? What is, how do we work together to get all of this stuff built? And what is your timing for, when do you want to develop? Are there properties that are coming in sooner rather than later? And we looked at a phasing of assumptions of when all of these projects are likely coming online, when are we going to need the infrastructure? And we did the cash flow analysis and found based on our assumptions, we have enough cash to provide SDC credits that could be used on those developments for each phase of development to get the infrastructure funded. Alternatively, I think Dan's pulling up that slide. So this is, oh, he's sharing it, sorry. There's a lag. All right, so this is the five year increments for the next 20 years. Again, this funding plan is at the master plan level. So we're looking at 20 years, trying to project, when is development going to come through? But I don't have a great crystal ball. I'm sure none of us have a great crystal ball, so it's, we had to use a lot of assumptions. But when projects actually come online is maybe anybody's guess. But this is a pretty educated guess based on the conversations we had. And it works. That being said, as Dan indicated, financing for an individual project, now I think it's the next slide. Scared what you pulled up. So financing for an individual project may not quite work out in the ideal world where a developer builds it and they get SDC credits. So the funding plan itself provides a full toolkit of options that we could look at, things that are already in our code. And the long list here, maybe we look at a supplemental infrastructure fee, maybe we look at a reimbursement district, et cetera. All of these are tools that we have, that we want to make sure that we keep in the funding plan. But any, any future action, if we were to finance a specific project using one of these tools, would have to come back to council for, for approval. And I think that's, well.
Yeah.
Yeah. So do you have any questions, comments?
Going back one slide. Where you, you're doing your best, maybe a couple slides.
On the phasing?
That one. So I know it's not a crystal ball. It's just a best guess, but it kind of caught my eye. The, the parcel that's next to the future community park on the east says 2040 to 2045. And it seems to me like, since it's close to a roadway, that that might be an area that would be developed earlier. I've been just curious.
Yeah, so that's, I mentioned this in my presentation, that that's an area where those are smart, smaller parcels that have recent homes, high value homes built on them that wouldn't be expected to redevelop in that timeframe. So we put that there that, you know, that's would be the last, we don't see that change happening, if at all, at the very end of this. So that really makes us, as you get into the details of the funding plan saying, we may have to look at alternative funding to actually build out that road within this timeframe because no development's anticipated on those properties that would actually trigger road improvements.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Given the fact that we have multiple tools available to us to provide some of that additional funding, have you prioritized, at least for, whether it's efficiency, cost, whatever it may be, prioritize these in any type of order? I mean, obviously grants and investments is great, right? Let's put that at the top. But any of the others?
We have not. I think it will be very project specific. For example, there's a pump station needed to serve all of Frog Pond South. But it's unlikely, as Dan said, a lot of the parcels are less than five acres, that one of those developers would take on the expense of building that pump station. So at some point, we may see that development has kind of stalled in that area, and we may need to think about a different tool, a local improvement district or reimbursement district for the city or with a partnership with a developer to get the pump station constructed to spur development in that area. So that's an example where we may need a different tool based on other needs.
And while not prioritized, there is discussion in the documents about considerations and types of projects that each of these may be most appropriate for. So kind of goes on what Amy said, is that really what are the sort of considerations that would make this something that would come forward as we go into a financing plan for a specific project or a specific piece of infrastructure?
Well, as we all know, when any type of development goes on, whether it's Frog Pond East or Frog Pond South, the infrastructure has, is critical. And there has to be, you know, a cost sharing. And I think you were very clear in your presentation about what the responsibility is of the developer and what the responsibility is of the city. But again, I'm going to say that that's one of the values when you do. But again, I'm going to say, um, that that's one of the values when you do bring in urban renewal, if and when you do, that there is value to that. Um, so I'm, I'm glad that you included in that, in these bullet points, as popular or unpopular as it may be. Um, but it, it, we have to have the infrastructure in order to put all of this in place. So thank you. Before I go ahead, council, President Akbar, do you have, I see you've got your hand up.
Thank you. I wonder, can we go back to the slide where we had some of those framework projects listed out? I noticed, so on the list of the framework projects, Stafford Road, Advanced Road, 60th Avenue is, is south of Advanced Road. Okay. So we're kind of familiarize ourselves with that. And then if we go to the slide where we're looking at where our crystal ball says that, you know, or when, I guess our crystal ball, where and when development might, uh, development might occur. Okay. So can you talk us through how those framework projects happen with the assumed, our best proposal of timing, um, and development responsibility? For instance, the road that goes between the fu- Future Community Park and the lots that we aren't anticipating will turn over. So, um, what happens with that road? What happens with, um, you know, the section of Advanced Road where we're looking at 2035 to 2040? Um, can you walk us through what all of that might, might, or how it might occur?
I will attempt to. So a developer is only required to do their half-street frontage improvement, which is that 20 feet of pavement, a planter, and a five feet of sidewalk. But as you have noticed, the timing doesn't always match for the full street to be constructed at the same time. So it could be an instance where, uh, for example, in the 2025, 2030, the north side of, of Advance is constructed, the half-street, but the south side is not. Depending on the city's funding ability or financing ability, we may be able to negotiate a development agreement that uses one of those other financing tools where we say, you know, it doesn't really make sense to only construct half of a street. We should really work together and figure out a way to do the full street. That's where the Future Financing Plan really comes into play, where we have that negotiating discussion with the developer, uh, see how, how willing they are to, uh, expand the partnership and, and kind of construct a lot more than what they're, uh, required to do. Um, as far as the community park frontage, in that instance, the city is the developer. So the city is responsible for our frontage improvements there. So it'll be dependent on, does the city have the funding at the time when, for example, the development to the north of Advanced Road is constructed for us to pay our developer's share to do the, the community park frontage? Or do we have to wait? Um, so those are all very much unknown, but a lot of things can happen with, depending on the project timing, how much money we have, and what we can negotiate.
And this is why this plan then has kind of a variety of tools outlined so that we can be flexible in those instances and try to find a best solution to get that infrastructure taken care of. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Cause, I mean, we've learned from experience that, and just, and just common sense or whatever you want to call it, that, right, there, there are unknowns, both in terms of cost of infrastructure and timing of development. And so we need to have a framework in place, but have that flexibility to address what, what is in front of us at that moment.
Thanks for helping explain that. Yep.
So, um, the developers are going to pay for the portion that's by their property, the local portion. And then, um, they could also pay for the oversized portion. And then if they do do that, they receive credits for the system development charges, correct? And then can you explain what they do with those credits?
So system development charges are paid at the time of building permit issuance. So this is part of the, I think, some of the, um, maybe some of the weakness in the process for developers is that they go through land use and then they go through infrastructure review and construction. And they build all the infrastructure and then they start selling lots. But they can't actually start using that money, those credits, until they start pulling those building permits. So there could be a, some lag time where they've put out a lot of money to put in the infrastructure and they can't use that credit until they actually pull a building permit. And then they only use a portion of that money. And so there's an incentive for them to keep building, right? Because they have these credit, credits sitting out there. Generally, we only allow them to be, uh, um, used within a 10-year period of the infrastructure being constructed. So there is a time period for them to kind of keep moving along, but there is, there is some lag time.
Um, Councilor Linville, do you have any comments? No, okay. Well, thank you for this. It's a, again, as we said before, a really detailed packet. And I, I was just going to refer to a couple of things, um, really referencing how long all of this takes. And it further underscores why, you know, future council meetings are going to delve into what is the best decision on how to pay for all of this. But I do want to ask a question. I think I know the answer to this. Is it possible to use the city's reserves and cash on hand today to just build all these streets and then later see if the houses get built?
I think it's a finance director, maybe a legal question, but as long as there's no restrictions on those funds, I believe, if they're unrestricted, I, I'm sure the city could use it.
Well, and we don't have our finance director here. Um, but given the, um, the budget committee work and the budget we, that we just adopted, I don't think that's possible. Because we have our reserves dedicated for certain things and certain reserves we have to have on hand, which is why we have to go through all of this, to try to identify how, some way that the city can identify that they will be able to pay for their portion before going forward. And going all the way back to November 15th, 2015, is when the city council adopted the Frog Pond Area Plan. This is on page two of six of item B. Um, and the Frog Pond Area Plan includes an infrastructure fund, funding plan at that time in 2015. And there's a lot more detail in appendix H. But the funding plan adopted with that entire Frog Pond Area Plan, which was 500 acres, evaluates the infrastructure needs for that entire 500-acre Frog Pond area and offers strategies of how to fund those infrastructure improvements. And so here we are now looking at Frog Pond East and South and trying to, you know, get closer to the answer now that it's that many years down the road. And, you know, part of our assignment and meeting here today is just see if we have any other questions, um, for you and comments. I wanted to comment, um, this far in advance of getting started on that, on various references that you have on item B about the level of service. And that is, is again predicting the number of houses that are going to be in certain areas of these neighborhoods and the amount of traffic that is predicted for those number of houses. What kind of traffic management is needed to make that work well? And we talked at, 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 we've, we've spoken earlier about how a roundabout is, has been found to be the safest method of moving traffic along and also the most efficient. And so there's a lot of discussion about that in here. But could you talk a little bit more about, um, the, the traffic roundabout and its usefulness in this particular area?
Sure. There's actually three roundabouts that were adopted into the transportation system plan. One at 60th and Advanced, one at Colley and Stafford, and one at Brisbane and Stafford. And, um, the importance of especially the ones at, uh, Colley and at 60th and Advance is that it's really important to be able to, to have a way to effectively slow down traffic when you have a rural and urban divide. People coming from a rural area tend to be traveling at higher speeds and they're entering into an urban area. And a stop sign and a traffic signal just aren't effective enough to force a vehicle to slow down, to make it safe for the bicyclists and pedestrians that are also using those intersections. So a roundabout is proven to be the safest alternative, especially in those instances.
And what about its effect on keeping traffic? I mean, safety is obviously extremely important. And then also, um, the effect on moving traffic through there. Happened to just have come from Bend and Sisters where they have really gone to a flow of traffic using roundabouts.
Yeah, I think one of the most effective parts about roundabouts is unlike signals that require some kind of timing, uh, especially in these areas where they're on the edge, where traffic kind of flows and you have peak traffics, uh, it's really hard to set a signal for timing for those peaks. So it could be, especially in these areas where a traffic signal would actually make you stop and wait because there's a timing of the signal and things that need to be, uh, engineered. Whereas a roundabout, if nobody's in the roundabout, you're able to continue moving through. Similar, when traffic is happening, you have to wait a little bit, but you continue to flow. Uh, you don't have to wait for that, uh, traffic timing.
Thank you. Well, so, I'll go ahead.
Well, just to summarize, so what I'm hearing you say is that, uh, the roundabouts are less expensive to build, they're safer, and they keep the traffic moving. Does that summarize what you're saying?
Two out of three. Uh, I think it depends on the type of roundabout, about the actual cost of construction. Uh, in this instance, the roundabouts, we found the developer contribution and cost is similar in both instances. Um, but there are other factors. Uh, right-of-way acquisition, roundabouts can take up a little bit more space. There's other factors that can make a roundabout cost a little bit more. But long-term maintenance, uh, I think it shows that it's more balances out. Upfront construction may be a little bit higher for a roundabout.
Okay, so, um, you, um, my last comment is just that you've given us a whole list of financing tools. It's on a later slide here. And they all have, um, pluses and minuses. And I just would say, continue with really being diligent on evaluating which tool would be best with the developers in the city. Any other comments you need from us? Questions?
No, and we'll be back with a resolution for adoption of this funding strategy, uh, on November 18th.
Thank you.
You know, we call you Mr. Frog Pond.
Okay, so that brings us to our next item, which is the I-5 Boone Bridge Project Compliance Findings Options.
Is our ODOT staff person?
And just while he's getting that set up, we have two more, this, we have one more item after this one, that is, review of the solid waste collection rate report draft. So we want to reserve, um, I think we have enough time for both of these. Oh, we're going to 7:30. We definitely do. Sorry.
I got it.
We're not rushed. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and members of the city council. Mark Ottnett, Public and Government Affairs Director for the city. And with us tonight, we also have, uh, from ODOT, the Oregon Department of Transportation, Stephanie Miller, who is with the Urban Mobility Office. Okay. She is available and we will, uh, call her if we need her. Okay. Uh, basically, uh, tonight, we are giving you a, a preview for later's, tonight's meeting on resolution number 3169, which is a resolution of the City of Wilsonville approving the I-5 Boone Bridge Replacement Project Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Enhanced Investment Scenario Review Report and requesting advancement of the authorization report supporting an I-5 southbound auxiliary lane. The purpose of the I-5 Boone Bridge Project is several-fold, to provide a seismically resilient interstate highway crossing of the Bullamette River in Wilsonville, to address public safety and operational issues, and to manage traffic congestion, and to improve connections for movement of all modes, bicycles, pedestrian, and vehicles, which includes transit, uh, buses and freight. The project saw several different needs. Uh, one is the current I-5 Boone Bridge is not earthquake-ready. It will not withstand a major earthquake and collapse into the Bullamette River. Traffic congestion on and approaching the I-5 Boone Bridge adversely, adversely affects traveler's safety, travel time, reliability, freight movement, and the overall economy. And pedestrian bicycle travel options across the river are limited and uncomfortable to use. The I-5 Boone Bridge Replacement Project has a number of goals. One, provide an earthquake resilient bridge that can withstand a ca- Cascadia-level subduction event with a 9.0 earthquake. To improve driver's safety, travel times, and freight movement with reduced congestion and fewer crashes. And to increase travel options with improved transit reliability and access for people walking, bicycling, or rowing across the Bullamette River. As well as to manage traffic and transportation demand with improved system operations. And also to follow an equitable process for meaningful public input in the decision-making process. Another set of goals includes supporting climate resiliency and greenhouse gas emissions reduction, goals of the Oregon statewide transportation strategy, and to support state, regional, and local transportation and land use planning efforts. And finally, avoiding and minimizing environmental and cultural impacts and considering opportunities for enhancement when they present themselves. The Climate Friendly and Equable Communities, also known as C-FEC, began in 2020 with a governor's executive order directing state agencies to reduce and regulate greenhouse gas emissions and to mitigate the impacts of climate change while also considering the needs of vulnerable communities. LCDC, the Land Conservation and Development Commission, developed these new requirements known as the C-FEC rules. And the C-FEC program impact, impacts the state's transportation and housing planning in regions with population over 50,000. So that includes Albany, Ben Corvallis, Eugene, Springfield, Grants Pass, Medford, Ashland, and the Portland metro region, as well as Salem, Kaiser. And this is contained in the Oregon Administrative Rules 660 at SEC. The I-5 Boone Bridge Replacement Project is subject to the C-FEC rules because we're located in the Portland metro area, population greater than 50,000, and because the project proposes a southbound auxiliary lane greater than one-half mile between the I-5 Wilson Road interchange entrance ramp and the I-5 Oregon 551 interchange exit ramp. This is a diagram, uh, from the report that illustrates the southbound auxiliary lane, which is roughly one mile long from Wilsonville Road, past Miley Road to State Highway 551. And this is a, um, a diagram that shows the replacement project area. And this is a diagram that shows the replacement project area, was basically about a mile-and-a-half oval paralleling I-5 where intensive study was conducted, particularly on potentially This draft Enhanced Investment Scenario Review Report is known in the shorthand as the Alternatives Review Report because they look at various alternatives. This is actually the first C-FEC report produced in the state of Oregon. We have the first, again, of doing something here in Wilsonville. And this was produced by ODOT as the owner-operator of I-5 on behalf of the city in conjunction with Clackamas County, because we're jurisdiction subject to the C-FEC rules. The alternatives considered in this report include alternative transportation facility for pedestrian bicycle crossings across the Bullamette River, and they have looked at the French Prairie Bike Ped Emergency Bridge option, as well as a protected bike ped lane on the I-5 Boone Bridge. Alternatives considered include public transportation, bus service between Wilsonville and Woodburn, which is actually something that SMART is planning to commence next year when the Amazon warehouse facility opens, as well as Bus on Shoulder, which is a program that we've already commenced with ODOT on I-5 between Towallton and Wilsonville, and we will be looking at on I-205 between Wilsonville and Oregon City starting next year. And they also looked at transportation demand management. This is how can we somehow influence people's driving habits? And this included looking at additional park and ride locations for transit utilization, as well as enhanced carpool and vanpool options. They also looked at system pricing, highway facility pricing, also known as tolling, not too popular in this neck of the woods, and Wilsonville parking pricing. There was like, what if we forced a price to park in Wilsonville? So the report came to two major sets of findings or conclusions. One, the southbound auxiliary lane is not expected to result in changes of land use, nor increase in vehicle miles traveled per capita from induced demand. So building the southbound auxiliary lane will not induce more travel or land use outside of the city. And alternatives to the southbound auxiliary lane are not able to substantially address the issues of safety and to improve congestion, both of which are primary goals of the project. Therefore, the recommendation in the report is to proceed with an authorization report. And in this context, authorization means that the City of Wilsonville has approved explicitly the southbound auxiliary lane project to move forward. And this project will have eventual inclusion in the city's updated TSP. I will note that we received this weekend a letter from Clackamas County supporting the southbound auxiliary lane option and the authorization report. That in a nutshell is the presentation tonight, and happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Mark, can you go back a couple of slides?
Sure. I hope so.
The second to last slide in your presentation.
This one?
Yeah. Can you speak to the not able to substantially address safety and improve congestion? So what you're telling me, it will not make it seismically sound? This is just to add additional traffic flow?
The southbound auxiliary lane is basically correct, is to provide more capacity for the timely movement of vehicles and reduction in accidents. And that other alternatives, meaning offering increased transit, offering more bike ped options, that none of these will have the desired effect with handling increased traffic or the traffic that we have and improving safety. So none of these, per se, pertain to the earthquake resilience of the bridge, per se.
So, but, and this was confusion when I was reading the report. This additional auxiliary, auxiliary, you know what I'm saying?
Ox Lane.
Yeah, the extra lane. Does that include the bike ped accommodation, too?
The bridge, the project will eventually involve a bike ped facility. The question at this time is, what is that facility? And that is not known. The primary question before us tonight is, does the City Council support the southbound auxiliary lane as being a component of the I-5 Boone Bridge Replacement Project?
And that would include, or it's not determined whether it would include the bike ped as part of the auxiliary lane, or if that's separate?
That's separate. It's not necessarily related to the auxiliary lane, it's related to the bridge project as a whole.
Okay, so the auxiliary lane can, could potentially be added without having to add a bike ped lane?
No, well, maybe. It depends on what bike ped alternative is eventually chosen. So for example, if they chose the French Prairie Bridge as the bike ped alternative, then the bridge itself might not need to accommodate a bike ped pathway.
Now you're getting back to my point. So my understanding from the ODOT presentation, when they had one a few weeks ago, was we are required, they're, not we, there is a requirement to add a bike ped.
Facility.
Facility as part of any type of expansion.
Correct.
Would it be possible to add just the auxiliary lane and then potentially down the road from that, without the bike ped, and potentially down the road from that, add at a later date, the French Prairie Bridge? Or do they have to happen at the same time?
I can speak to that if you'd like, Mark.
Our ODOT specialist has now beamed in, Stephanie Miller, from the Mobility Division of ODOT.
Hi there, I'm Stephanie Miller, Principal Planner in the Urban Mobility Office at ODOT. So the question at hand is whether or not the City Council supports the inclusion of the southbound auxiliary lane. Separate issues are that the alternatives that Mark just described don't provide enough safety and congestion improvements to say that they could replace the value of the auxiliary lane. And that's the central question of C-FEC. On the other issue of, could we stage the bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure in such a way that French Prairie Bridge came later? The bike bill requires that bicycle and pedestrian facilities either be built before or concurrently with the bridge. So we could put the bridge in with the bike ped facility, and that still does not preclude French Prairie from happening later. Kind of serves a different audience and purpose in some ways. Or we could, if we can find funding to make it happen, do the French Prairie Bridge first and then the Boone Bridge.
So, and this is, I'm seeking to understand, so is it legal to ride a bicycle or walk on I-5?
Strangely, it is. There are about four places on Oregon highways where you're legally precluded, and other than that, it is legal to ride on most transportation facilities.
Okay, thank you.
While she is coming back on, I have a question. This, I'm looking at the letter from Clackamas County, which reflects some of the same point that Counselor Dunwell was bringing up. And I just would like you to zero in on that third paragraph, where I believe it says that improvements to the pedestrian bicycle system, which we just described, transportation demand management and system pricing alone are not able to substantially address and improve congestion. And then it goes on to say, even as a combined set of investments. So are they saying that we must have both of these to relieve congestion? Some bike ped facility and the auxiliary lane? And are they also saying that even with that, our congestion woes will not be solved?
I read the county letter to indicate that none of the alternatives studied, bike ped, more buses, tolling, et cetera, none of those individually or collectively would do what the southbound ox lane would do in terms of traffic mobility and reducing of accidents.
Okay, good, okay. Thank you.
I know, Counselor Linville, you have a question. Wasn't it like 60% of that traffic exits off the Canby exit?
One-third.
One-third.
So it's proving the point that we must have this auxiliary lane, which we've been saying.
Yes, ever since we did the Wilsonville-I-5 facility plan in 2019.
All right, Counselor Linville.
I'm sorry, I got booted there for a minute. Not sure why. Maybe it's the I-5 auxiliary lane discussion and how important that is. So I think one of the other alternatives, which isn't in there, is the no-bill, you know, and that one, that obviously is not going to address safety and improve congestion. Before I make just a comment about my support for this, for us moving forward with the authorization, I, and especially if we still have our ODOT expertise on, I seriously believe that while this is necessary, the southbound auxiliary lane, that our problem starts where all of the auxiliary lanes that lead to I-205 and southbound, and I-5 goes from that auxiliary lane just south of, of, just before the entrance onto I-5 from 205, and it goes from four lanes to two lanes. And then we expand with another auxiliary lane that goes to Elixon. And I firmly believe that if we could continue that as an auxiliary lane all the way down from that point to the Canby, to 551, that that would really improve the safety and congestion. I recognize we are only talking about the southbound auxiliary lane at this point, and it would not preclude ODOT from putting in that auxiliary lane that would go all the way down. So I just wanted to forward my support for forwarding our authorization along to the C-FEC project and the Boone Bridge Replacement Project. And so that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Counselor Berry?
Mark, could you clarify the timing of the auxiliary lane? If we were to go forward with that, we don't have to wait for the Boone Bridge to be replaced to get this auxiliary lane, right? We could move forward with this extra lane? And then, they can be separate, or are they absolutely tied together?
Yes, Mayor Fitzgerald, Counselor Berry, the project is one whole project, the Boone Bridge Replacement Project. So because the bridge will collapse in a Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake, ODOT basically proposes to rebuild the entire thing, this time with the southbound ox lane. But they would not build the current, use the current bridge to build the southbound ox lane, because that bridge will fall into the river during a Cascadia Subduction Zone event.
Anything else, Council President Ograville?
No, I appreciate the report. I don't have any questions. And I do believe that this is on our agenda for the regular meeting, correct?
Correct.
So when we take a vote on it. So I may make some comments at that time, but I don't have any clarifying questions. I appreciate the coverage we've had here in the work session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It looks like we've covered that. Thank you, Mark. And that brings us to something else you're on deck for, which is the review of the 2024 Draft Solid Waste Collection Rate Report.
I will invite our rate reviewer, Mr. Chris Bell, up to the podium, to the table. And good evening, City Council members, Mayor Fitzgerald, City Council. Tonight, we're discussing Resolution Number 3162, which is actually set for adoption next month on November 18th. I am Mark Ottnett, Public and Government Affairs Director, and with me is?
Chris Bell, CPA and garbage consultant.
Solid Waste Review Consultant, let me first say. So this resolution, when we come to the City Council next month, oh, thank you. I forgot to hit the share button. Okay. So this was a resolution adopting the findings and recommendations of the Solid Waste Collection Rate Report, and it will be dated November 2024, not October. October is the draft version. And modifying the current Republic Services rate schedule for collection and disposal of solid waste, recyclables, organic materials, and other materials effective January 1, As I note, this is a, tonight is a work session to review the draft report, and then next, and then whatever direction you give us tonight, we will come back with a final revised report on November 18th for your consideration. The rate review process results include an annual cost report, adjusted results for 2023, projected results for 2024, and rate recommendations for 2025. Any additional comment? No?
Well, there's two, two rate recommendations. So we're hoping to get some input on this and present to City Council the.
The options.
Yeah.
So basically, Republic Services, as a reminder, has three lines of business, roll cart, which is residential, container, which is commercial business, drop box, which is industrial customers. And when you total all three, that equals what's known as composite revenue. Why don't you speak to this one?
Oh, this one. This year, when we got the annual report that was submitted back in the end of July, ran through it and did some adjustments to the results that were submitted, and the adjusted results for 2023 came out to 7.5%, which is in line with the estimation from last year's rate review report.
As you can see, the three lines of business had different rates of return, from a low of 1.1% to a high of 16.8%.
So when we take the 2023 results, and if you recall, last year, we had some adjustments, some pretty robust adjustments that took place in February, and those rates are in effect right now. But in addition to that, additional revenue, these are the adjustments, or excuse me, the projected increases for collection costs that are going to be incurred in the current year. One of them is the union drivers. And last year, we front-loaded the rates because we knew that there was going to be an adjustment coming, a significant one, due to contract labor within the area. Health insurance is up a little bit. Waste disposal, 6% for the projected year. However, there is a significant amount that's going to be coming up in the following year, in 2025, which we can talk about here in a little bit. Inflation on 2.6%, and we adjusted yard-to-reach disposal for the same price of inflation. And so for 2024, we're estimating around a 9.7% for the composite. And you can see that residential came up a little bit, container came up a little bit, and drop box was down a little bit. Overall, it's 9.5%. Typically, when we, or when I adjust rates, I like to see each line of business standalone at 10%. However, Wilsonville is unique in the area because you've got a significant amount of industrial, same like Towallton. So that does have a robust impact. And so right now, we can do one of two things. I can either just, you know, projected the container down, or we can let the rates ride. And at some point, when we do a significant adjustment, we can. rates ride, and at some point, when we do a significant adjustment, we can, we can set each one of those at 10%.
The franchise...
I don't think you heard yet.
Oh, the rate result?
Can you go back to the prayer slide? Can you clarify what you mean about taking it across the board to 10%?
Yeah, so what I would do is if, if, knowing the significant increase, if, if you wanted to set that five and a half percent to 10%, you'd see a significant increase in residential rates, over another $2 in addition to what we, what we were proposing, and you'd see a decrease in container revenue to offset that.
What would be the justification for that? Just to equalize it?
Correct.
Other than that, is there any other justification beyond that?
Well, some cities have a, you know, they look for the composite to become at 10%, and some cities want to see each line of business stand on its own. The reason it's not significant here is because you have one hauler. So in some cities, you may have two or three haulers, and they may have different mixes of, of businesses. So here, there's not a policy that the city has that says you will set it at 10%. However, when, when we had COVID hit a few, few years ago, cities that had a significant subsidization from one line of business to another were suffering. So when the commercial rate, or excuse me, commercial business decreased, that had a significant impact on the overall composite.
Yeah, I, I struggled with reading the entire recommendation and report, just because I still recall what we went through last year. And that we had a significant increase, and I'm glad that we're thinking ahead a little bit, rather than waiting a few years and then being hit with a very significant increase. I want to make sure that we're really thinking through all of this and equalizing it across the board, you know? Let's be fair to everybody. May make sense, but I'm not necessarily sure if, if that is the right path to go. So what is your recommendation?
The, the unknown right now is what's going to happen next year with the disposal increases. We've seen significant increase over the last four years from the metro tipping fee. We don't know what it's going to be like next year. We really don't. And I don't, to be honest with you, I don't think Metro really knows at this point. We were supposed to be seven, see, 7% for, for a period of time, and we've hit, I think, I think the average is 12%. They just came out with another plan, and I'm going to be addressing this, I think, on Thursday, the mayor's forum, with significant increases on that for, for capital infrastructure.
All from Metro?
From Metro, yeah. And so if, if, and let me back up here. Metro controls the disposal fee that's being charged within the area. And so even though Republic Services has their own transfer station, there's an, there's a specific line in there that says you will match Metro on a rate in order to get tons, because Metro controls how many tons they have flowing through their transfer station. If they have a significant decrease in tons, their unit cost increases. Or if they have a significant increase in tons, it could de, you know, the, the, the cost could, either or. So they're kind of at behest, because, you know, Metro is not only their regulator, but it's their competitor. So disposal does have a significant impact. It's their most expensive component of the, of the rate. And so trying to estimate what that's going to be next year is, is, has been really, rather difficult for all the jurisdictions within the Portland metropolitan area. And so I'd like to say, you know, it's going to be up, you know, a couple percent of inflation, but I, I can't tell you that. I, I just don't know.
I wonder if it would be good to ask you to give a, kind of a synopsis of what we've been hearing at the, you know, Metropolitan Mayor's Commission had some presentations in the different county meetings about Metro's plans for capital improvements. Could you just give a little snapshot of that, please?
Yeah, they want, the, what I read the other day, it's $263 million worth of infrastructure improvements, primarily geared to self-haul. So if you look at the amount of, of tons that are flowing through the transfer, transfer system within the Portland metropolitan area, you know, the self-hauls is a small amount. It's a significant amount of people, because the average weight of a self-hauler is around 550 pounds, whereas a garbage truck is going to come in around seven tons. And so trying to handle that, that traffic is what Metro's looking at. But the amount of capital cost is significant to handle that few tons. And so there's a lot of questions that need to be asked, and, and right now, Metro's looking for input on that. And I think that a lot of questions need to be asked, and I don't think the correct questions are being asked, because the people who, the information that you're seeing from Metro is not adequate enough for, for local jurisdictions to make decisions.
You're providing me with some new information that I wasn't aware of.
Correct.
And you're probably aware of this, Mayor, because you're part of the mayor's consortium. You're talking about Metro wanting to make capital improvements to increase the number of self-hauls?
No, they want to serve the self-hauler.
They want to serve the self-hauler.
Correct.
They don't currently serve the self-hauler.
They serve the self-haulers with two, their two transfer stations. However, most of the other transfer stations within the area don't cater to self-haul. Those transfer stations were built primarily to handle route trucks.
Why? Why do they want to improve self-haul?
They believe it's part of their equity mission, and so they're looking at creating more transfer stations, I think maybe four more or five within the Portland metro area, so as to provide more convenient access for self-haul.
So any day of the week, I could say, I fill up the back of my truck, and I'm going to go take it to a transportation, and they're going to charge me?
Correct.
Got it.
Correct. And then here's the other thing, too, that, that, and I don't think a lot of people realize that in a franchised area, there's no requirement for anybody to take garbage, regular garbage service. You know, I, I think the most effective way to, is to put it on the curb every week. The truck drives by, they pick it up, you know, and, and you can, and some communities have, you know, realize that there is an inefficiency as far as, you know, having their residents drive either to Metro South or, or Metro Central, and then if you better have been there on a weekend, you can see the traffic, you know, the lines are significant. Some jurisdictions are looking at saying, well, why don't we utilize the hauler and their infrastructure and have, you know, either, either, you know, annual cleanups? Or they have a call to haul, or they have a, 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 a rate that's built into the, into the system where, you know, citizens get to, you know, maybe one or two calls a, a year, where they build into the rates. So there are other things that you can do that are, I think, probably better serving to, to the residents, because not everybody's got a, you know, pickup truck, or they want to fill their car up and take it in standing line at Metro.
So like our good friends at Republic already do, right? They do it twice a year?
Yeah.
And, yeah, I mean, it's a great partnership. So, and you're saying Metro does not have that capability, or they only have two of them currently?
They have two transfer stations. So they, they have, but they don't. They, they, they control a portion of the garbage flow, but they don't control the collection. They like to think they do. But the collection is controlled by this, by the, by the City Council. You determine what level of service you want, and you set the rates. And so if you told Matt over here, said, I want this, and he'd say, he'd come up with a rate, say, here's what I can do for you. So there's a lot of things that you can do as, as a local jurisdiction to better serve your customers. The, the infrastructure plan that Metro's got up, I, I, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of, like I said, there's a lot of questions that need to be specifically asked, because that $263 million comes out to $2 per customer per month, just for that infrastructure, whether you use it or not. You know, that's $24 a month for every, every, you know, rate payer within the city of Wilsonville.
So what we, what this brings up, a point that in my mayor's comments, I was going to mention, having gone to the Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting, when, where the metro refuse and recycling, if I'm saying that right, department made a presentation about this, and they have offered to come to city council meetings. So if we had them and, and make that presentation, I don't know if we have time in the next two meetings to do that, or how that fits in with all this planning, but I think what you're telling us is we have a lot of uncertainty into the future rates because of the fact that they have not finalized that plan.
Correct. And that, that $263 million is on top of what you're already paying right now. So right now, your, your, your disposal rate's almost $154 a ton. That's a lot. So back to your, your question. Would I like to, I, I, you know, I'm an accountant, I like everything to be equal. I like to level it out, but under the current circumstances, we're hitting a 9.7%. You know, we're hitting, we're hitting with almost that, that, that 10% composite, you know? And so what do you do right now? You know, I'm looking to maintain that. You know, what, what's that going to require? And so there's, there, the two rates, there are two rate alternatives that were presented for you. One kind of maintains that, the other kind of, the other, the other one hits the, the rate that's within the ordinance.
Yeah, I, I understand where you want to go with that, with that 10%. I can't support that, given everything that I've seen so far. Particularly for consumer customers?
And I'm not recommending that.
Okay.
Right. No, I'm, that's not part of the...
Okay, just be clear. Okay, it's just an option.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Knowing that we will be looking at some kind of increase, because the franchise allows for a CPI increase when the rate is between eight and 9.9%. So we're still below 10%. So the CPI, so basically, we really have two options. There's a general rate increase at CPI, which would be 2.6%. That could be one option. The other option is that some rate services proposed to increase in the range of 3.4% to 6.3%, which is tied more directly to the increase in cost of disposal, which has been now referenced.
So what, what I, as Mark was saying, there's, there's, there's two pieces to, for the residential, there, there's, what we've done in Clackamas County for a significant amount of time is, is we've looked at what, what are the known and measurable costs that the haulers, the franchise haulers are going to incur? And so what we try to do is we try to maintain the rates to the lowest amount we can without, you know, we adjust those up. And so in this case, the, we know that two costs are going to increase. We know that there's going to be a cost of labor, and that's for a union contract that Republic Services has with the Teamsters. We also know that the tipping fee increase ha, incurred, was incurred on July 1st, and that's going to be in effect till June 30th of next year. And so the increase that we're proposing, or that I, that I calculated, is taking that in, that cost of disposal and adding that to the current rates. And then for the residential, adding that, a small additional cost for the, for the labor costs. Not for, 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 for commercial, because you saw that significant increase, or, or the ratio for commercial business, but I just wanted to maintain that, that current rate with the increased cost disposal.
Mayor, Councilor Linville, has her hand up?
Oh, Councilor Linville?
I, I have, I, it seemed like that whole discussion that we were having about that hauler rate was way off of the, I know we have time, but it was way off of the discussion on this particular item. And I'm wondering if we're ready for comments on this, or if we need to wait till the presentation is finished.
We're almost to the end here. What I thought, we would be okay, we could just finish with the rate report recommendations, and then show a comparison with just a CPI increase.
So when, when you're talking about the CPI, according to our ordinance, it says it would be adjusted to reflect 75% of the CPI. Is that what is proposed in, when you're talking about the CPI in, in these, both in the staff report and in this, and in these slides?
Councilor Linville, if I can jump in, Amanda Guile Hinman, City Attorney. Our ordinance says that if the projected rate of return falls between 8% and below 10%, it's 100% of the CPI. So what the comparison will be is 100% of the CPI, which is 2.6% versus these other variance rates.
Okay, so if it was 10%, but less than 12% of the gross revenues, then it would be 75% of the CPI.
That's correct. That's correct.
So we're talking about putting it at, and I'm, because all of these are, I mean, if we go back to the previous slide, they're estimates, correct? They're estimates. I mean, we do retrospective, not prospective, decisions about rates. We, we don't anticipate what it might be in the future. We go by perspective, and that's why we look at the gross revenues during the period which we, of which we are deciding. We aren't, we're not basing it on estimates. Is that correct?
Well, there, there is a project, for, for the 2024, that is an estimate right now, because we're in that current year.
Right, but some of the things that we've been discussing are talking about what's going to happen January 1st, or July 1st, or, you know, those are items that really we are not considering, or haven't considered in the, in the past, I guess, is what, is what I'm saying. And when you made the comment about that we didn't have a 10% as a target, we do have a 10% as a target in our ordinance. So I'm just trying to really understand, but I will, I, I have some other comments to make, but I'll wait, Mark, until you go through the comparison, and then, and then I'll ask the mayor if I can speak.
Very good. Our next slide was on commercial container service.
And what I'm proposing here is just the pass-through of the increased disposal cost for commercial container collection.
So the, there are, now, in the report, there are two new proposed fees, and these would require City Council approval. A drop box distance fee and a landfill fee.
So the, the distance fee, right now, the majority of your waste that's collected within the city limits is either taken to WRI or to an, a, a processing, a yard debris processing facility that's in close proximity. The longer hauls to either Coffin Butte landfill or to Hillsborough landfill would be assessed a, a distance fee, a mileage fee. And that's a standard, the other jurisdictions, Clackamas County has, has the same fee. And what that does is it, it, it keeps the fee for local hauls low, so that way, those distant hauls are not being subsidized by the, by the, by the, 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 the local hauls. Because that, the way drop box rates are assessed, it's the cost of the, of the hourly cost of operating the truck multiplied by the average rate, or the average time. And so if the times increase, then that cost would increase, but it, I, I don't like assessing an increased cost for everybody when you only have a few hauls that are taken to these distant landfills. And so that's the reason for this drop box distance fee.
May I ask a question about that, Peter? Is that okay?
Go ahead.
Um, why and when would the hauls need to be taken to these further away destinations?
You have your water treatment plant that has a sludge that can't be taken to the transfer station, because if you dropped it on the floor, then you got to scoop it up, and so they take it straight from, from the sewage treatment plant to Coffin Butte. And then there are special wastes, for example, asbestos, that has to be taken to Hillsborough landfill. So there's special waste.
So it's like the, the, the content of the materials that are being...
Correct.
...beamed off?
Correct, yeah, exactly. So there, and you know, there's, there's, I, I didn't see any, the, any other hauls that, that required special handling. Those were the two that we saw.
And has it always been that these facilities are the facilities that, for whatever reason, are able to handle that type of waste? Or is that narrowing, I guess, and, and becoming more specialized? Like this facility just does this type of waste, and that facility does that type of waste?
Correct.
So we are seeing it become more specialized?
Well, it is specialized for, so for example, like I was saying, the, the, the sludge that's taken to the sewage treatment plant, it, you know, if, if you can take it to the transfer station here locally, and usually it's either dry waste or municipal solid waste, they, they can handle it and take it to, they'll end up taking a Coffin Butte anyway for the wet waste, and, or, or for the dry waste. But in this case, it, it, it requires special handling at those facilities.
Okay, I was just asking, because I think we'd want to encourage, you know, to be as local as we can, to avoid having the vehicles drive extra distance and... as local as we can, to avoid having the vehicles drive extra distance and, um, just partly because of our earlier concerns about traffic, you know, early in this meeting, right? So, um, I was just wondering how like the overall system works, and what has been prioritized by which party as far as, you know, why do certain, um, facilities only handle, you know, this type of waste over another?
Correct, and, and, and the other, the other reasons too, some of these, some of these other facilities are permitted, permitted, excuse me, to handle these special wastes. So for example, you can't take asbestos to WRI, you have to take it to Wilson, or excuse me, not to Devry, but to, uh, to Hillsborough landfill, because they have special, the special handling permit, and they got an area within the landfill where they have to handle that. So that's one example.
I see, and who does that permitting, or like who gets to decide?
Oregon DEQ.
Okay, DEQ, okay, thank you for helping explain that.
Councilor Linville has a question, comment?
I do, I, I have a question about these new proposed rates, the new fees, and I'm trying to understand how they might directly impact, um, what we set in terms of residential and commercial fee, and commercial rates. Are these fees, um, levied, um, for specific deliveries?
Yes.
So it, it isn't that just because, or, I mean, not, so if the city of Wilsonville was asking for sludge to be, then, to be removed and, and transported to where it can be handled, the city of Wilsonville would be directly, um, um, billed for those new fee, that new fee?
Correct, I believe what your water tree is contracted.
Yeah, the water treatment.
Viola, yeah.
So, so it's not something that generally will be levied upon residential and commercial customers?
Well, in this case, the commercial customer is Viola, and that would be the customer that, that would pay the additional amount for that, to handle that sludge.
Right, but not for, but not for regular containers as they are proposed in our rates?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so although this is interesting information, it's probably not relevant to our commercial and residential rates as we have them in our schedule?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then, so the other one is the, we have the distance fee and then the landfill fee, and, and like I was saying earlier, that drop box service is assessed on the time, the average time that the vehicle is spending collecting or hauling the waste. And so once you're at the landfill, you drive in, you go to the tipping, tip, the face of the landfill, you dump, you come back, and typically, the time on site's around 30 minutes. Well, the way we've set the rates up already in Wilsonville, you're in and out of the transfer station at WRI around 10 minutes. So that additional time that's going to be expended at the landfill is covered by this landfill fee. And because you've got a significant amount of trucks and containers and everything else, it may, you know, it, it takes longer to get through and dump at a landfill than it does a transfer station. And so that's, that's the reason for this. And again, this would be in addition to the, you know, the, if you're going to Coffin Butte or going to Hillsborough landfill, this would be in addition to the haul fee and the mileage fee.
The proposed landfill related fees would increase rates greater than the CPI rate of 2.6%. Republic Services recommends adoption, but has not requested an extraordinary rate increase to accommodate this, and the council has discretion on whether or not to consider the new fees. Here is a comparison that was in the staff report of CPI only and CPI plus fees, and the column on the far right with the red oval shows you the difference in rate between CPI plus or just the CPI rate. Our last one is just a, a slide on the industrial rates proposed.
And that's just an increase of $5 per, per haul, per drop box haul.
I see a question from Council President Ockervall, maybe it's on this slide, I don't know.
Sorry, it was actually on the last slide, can we go back, um, to the one that had the multiple columns, yeah, okay. So we see the, the column that says current rate plus CPI, so I'm assuming that's our 2.6 that we've talked about. And then, um, there's proposed rate and report, and then the difference. So for instance, on that first line, we see that the current rate plus the CPI is 2380, but the proposed rate is 24 with a difference of 20 cents. So why did it go up to 24?
24 is the cost, that's, that's the cost of the disposal plus the labor, the additional labor cost. So it's a little higher than the CPI.
I guess I, I still don't, can you, can you try explaining that in another way? Because I understood that our ordinance had, that if we're between the eight, you know, our, our, our goal is the 10, we've got the eight to 12, if we're anywhere between eight and 10, we go with 100% of the CPI. So, um, I guess I, I understand all of that framework, but I don't understand where we're doing now, the CPI plus additional labor?
No, with the, there, there's, the, the first column's the current rate, the second column is the current rate multiplied by the 2.6, 2.6%.
Got it.
Okay, the third column is the, what I, what I calculated as the pass-through of the disposal increase plus the labor increase. So you've got one to two, two alternatives, you can either do the, the 2.6% CPI, or you can, or you can pass through the increased cost of disposal plus the in cost, the increased cost of labor.
Okay, so that, yeah, that third column is if we wanted to do the CPI and then?
No, no, that's just the difference, no, that's just, no, that's just the difference between the two rates. So, a, a, as, as the city?
No, the third column, the one that says proposed rate and report, that's CPI plus an additional disposal fee that's been spread out.
Correct, correct.
Correct, okay, okay, I wasn't, um, sure, and that, and that kind of goes back to our conversation earlier that we had about this disposal fee and some of the questions that we have regarding what Metro's going to do with the disposal fee.
Correct.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Councilor Linville?
Thank you. So just, just a question before I make a comment, when you say the increased cost in, in labor, are you talking about the union contracts?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not talking about these disposal fees, you're talking about anticipating or increasing the, the rate based on the CPI plus, uh, con, union contracts, which would put us into, according to our policy of having to deal with, um, extraordinary circumstances?
Not exactly, no, what, what, when, when I calculated the rates in a rate report, it was the, the additional cost of disposal plus the labor cost. I added those two together and calculated what the rate impact would be for the different sizes of containers, whether it's commercial or residential. And then, because you had the re-review, and just looking at the increased cost of disposal, which was 11, over 11% over, over year to year, I calculated that, and then Amanda came back and said, well, the ordinance says 2.6%. So you got to calculate like this, and so we asked Republic, do you want to, you want to file a report or file a letter saying, do you want the extraordinary rate increase? And they said, no. They said, well, you know, we've got two options, we'll present to city council and let them make the decision on what rate alternative they want to choose, whether they just want to increase the rates across the board at 2.6%? Or whether they want to pass through the additional cost of disposal for residential and commercial, and then the additional cost of labor for residential? So what you're, what you're looking at is a lower rate, if you take 2.6% of the current cost, that's a CPI adjustment, that's what's in your rate ordinance. But if you wanted to look at and say, listen, we, you know, is the cost of disposal going to be higher than a 2.6, which it is, do we want to anticipate passing the rate through with the additional cost of disposal to maintain the current level of, 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 of your rate of return? And so what I would, the way I explain it is, if you have those additional costs that you can pass through without having huge cost swings from year to year, would you rather take the incremental cost of those known and measurable increases and put those into rates? Or do you just want to take the 2.6%? Because at some time in the future, that 2.6% is going to be higher than, than, than inflation. And what I was saying earlier is, I don't know what the impact is going to be, or the cost increase is going to be in the upcoming fiscal year for, for Metro.
Well, going back to Councilor Linville, to layer on to what Councilor Linville just asked, by going beyond just the CPI, puts us in a position where we may not necessarily find ourselves win last year, where we got hit with a significant increase because some of, we had just stayed with that lower CPI for a period of time, correct?
Correct.
No, no, I, I think where we ran into it too was that?
There was an error, there was an error, I, I believe, on the calculations too, but...
Well, I think if you go back in the history, it wasn't because we had increased by CPI, there were no increases in several of the previous years, isn't that correct?
That's correct, and, and, and part of that, you know, the, and, and this is, this is why, you know, the, the increased tipping fee is significant, because, you know, for, for 20-plus years, the average increase in the tipping fee was 2.3%. And then for the last four years, it's been, you know, over 11%. So it's had its, and, and, you know, here in Wilsonville, you've had a lot of, a lot of growth, and growth, you know, growth covers the cost, the additional cost of, of, you know, inflation and stuff like that, but over the last four years, we, we've kind of got away from that model because, because the tipping fee's been significant and the cost of inflation's been significant. And so we've seen increases every year for those, for, for those costs, whereas in, in previous years, we'd, we'd adjust the rate, come back two or three years and we'd adjust it again. But we're seeing increases, you know, every annually, and it's, it's, it's becoming, it will, it, you know, from an electorate body, you guys are probably, you know, oh god, we got to see this guy again about right, adjusting our rates. And I'm with you, because I look at it, I get frustrated too, because there, there's a lot of stuff that's out of your hands that should be back in your hands, and that's being one of them. And so, you know, and, and this is kind of confusing, what I, what I, and I, and I can tell by, by the looks in your eyes, but the, you know, the choice is, i- if, if you, you can do the 2.6%, and that's, that's what the, the ordinance says, or do you want to anticipate that that cost is going to be even higher next year and, and add that in, or do you say 2.6%, we adjust it and we see what happens next year?
So I have a question about the, um, let's say we went with the proposed rate in the report, which is, you know, $24 for the 20 gallon, for example. That 20 cents goes to Republic, and there's a justification for it to do that because of the labor increases?
It's a labor and it's the cost of disposal.
And the cost of disposal, so it is, it is a real cost, and we anticipate that in the following year, it's going to be even more, and so that gives, that does give a, if you would call it a benefit of a gradual increase.
Correct.
But alternatively, so that would be a benefit of less sticker shock.
Correct.
But yet, we have to weigh that against the alternative of, of paying, of, of basically paying a little bit less now and having sticker shock.
Correct.
And we cannot control, at this point, the cost of the tipping fee.
Correct, correct.
And Councilor Linville?
I'm going to make my final comments now, because I assume that we're at the, at the end of the presentation, but, um, and we've got five minutes left. I, I really don't feel comfortable working outside of the ordinance without a request for, and, and I guess I'd need to have our city attorney really do the interpretation, but bumping it up to 20 cents, I have a difficult time, I mean, and the other cents or the percentages, the, the, going higher than the percent. And, and the reason that I do is because, um, uh, I think as, as, as Mayor Fitzgerald indicated, I don't have a justification to tell our, um, citizens that we are bumping it up in anticipation when, when in fact the 2024 estimate is, is an estimate of, at 9.7. And it could be by the time we get done with, overall with 2024, that it is a different number than that, either higher or lower. And so if we're functioning outside of what our ordinance allows or prescribes, then I think we've kind of got a, um, I have a problem myself in justifying that. Does it mean that it's incremental increases and maybe next year, uh, they would have to be increased again? Perhaps, but that's based on actual costs, and if the, um, the ROR is not, um, it, it is up where it is, it is where it is. And I think we function from that, and that's what I feel comfortable doing, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Linville, Council President Ockervall.
I agree, I think, um, my feelings on the matter is similar in that the information, the data that we have, um, that is, like, confirmed by our ordinance is that we are at 9.7%, which would put us at 100% of the CPI, so I would like to carry that out. I know that in the past, you know, we had reference to, that there was some years we didn't do an increase. Well, part of the reason we didn't do the increase was because we were above the, you know, the eight to 12%, and that's why the increase didn't happen. So, um, there's, if, if we're trying to kind of like, huh, to, to second guess or to smoothen it out or something like that, it doesn't seem like we do it on the flip side, because there's no refund that happens if we go above. I, I appreciate and respect, um, you know, Republic Services putting forth a proposal that we do the CPI amount of 2.6% and that as our process, like the framework as a, as a, kind of, hmm, lay, lays out what, what will happen, is that we continue to do the analysis every year, and we'll come back to that. If we end up feeling that the process that we have in our ordinance is not functioning, then I think we need to revisit the ordinance. But I'm in, I'm in favor of following our ordinance.
Thank you, so we're at 7:30, I'd like to ask, Councilor Berry, do you have a, a comment on this?
No, I mean, just, I agree, keeping the current rate for the CPI just makes sense to me, and that we reevaluate next year when we have more information for next year's numbers.
Thank you.
Your honor, if I could just go on the record, um, and just a, just a really quick comment, I would make a recommendation that future councils, and maybe we wouldn't get it done before the end of our, this current council, but future councils look at finding a date, uh, like, um, October 1, where, where the ROR is actually, is, is, is calculated as an actual. And that number would then be used in the ordinance, um, to determine the, so it wouldn't be on an estimate, um, that it would be based on an actual from January 1 through, or, or even back it up from October 31 through, um, October 1. So, um, so that it's, it, we don't get into this situation where we're dealing with an actual, because I think... because I think the rate increases are expected to change January 1. And we don't have the data for the whole year prior to making that decision.
Thank you. Looks like we don't have any more comments. We're not, we don't vote at a work session, so have we given you enough information, response?
So the direction we're getting is 2.6%?
Yes.
That's, that's what I, that's what I was hoping here, or a direction.
One more comment?
I disagree with the other councillors. So I would, I, we're not voting on this.
No, we can't vote now.
So I, I want to make sure that we're looking at both.
Okay, okay.
We, we will however have to, we want to bring you back a final rate report for adoption in November. At this point, we understand that the direction is to do CPI only. That's what we're hearing from a majority of council.
And I'm hearing that we also want to look at an analysis of the, let's get a, get an updated, another analysis.
We can do both, that's, that's simple.
Of the...
So make two rate schedules?
At, at the work session, we do, we do try to give direction. Do you want to talk some more about that?
No, we could, I can, I can do that.
I think that would be good.
So it sounds like then we will bring you two proposed rate schedules, one at CPI and one at CPI plus.
Yes, let's do that.
You will have to decide which one at that point.
Sounds like it's, we're close enough to being able to do that with what we have today.
Very good. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, it looks like Council President Ockervall has her hand raised.
Oh, Council President Ockervall.
Well, I understand if we need to move on because of time constraints, if that's the case.
Well, we're still here, go with one more comment.
I did have a question for Councilor Dunwell because here we've spent all this time talking about the CPI and then the CPI plus the additional disposal fee that we're anticipating. But there was also those other kind of more specific fees for the distance and the landfill. And I wondered if Counselor Dunwell was thinking about those fees or about the CPI plus the disposal fee? Because I do see some point in those, the distance fee and the landfill fee that would be applied specifically to the customer that is utilizing like those services or needs. I, I see how that could make sense.
Yeah.
It feels like it's outside the, the standard delivery of service, so that's why I felt.
I understand that we want to follow ordinance and I agree with other councillors on that. What I, what I'm hearing is the city is growing, the cost of disposal is significantly increasing, the cost of labor is increasing, and they expect that specifically the disposal cost will continue to increase. And I, I, I am concerned that if we're, we're just doing CPI, we could find ourselves in 2025 having to really look at some significant increases unless we stick with the ordinance or we might modify the ordinance. All of that being said, I, I, I really keyed on the fact that you're saying you don't expect this to drop down again.
No.
That's what I'm hearing. And I heard the conversations about the capital, the capital plan from Metro. And so I'm hearing all of these other things, elements that are being layered in and I do get concerned about the future and where we're going to go. That's where I'm coming from.
And that would be a good question. Where, what is the council's thought on these two additional fees? Is it up or down?
The distance?
Yeah, the distance fee and the Dropbox distance fee and landfill.
So, go ahead. When I was at the Heavy and Bulky Waste Day, I spoke with one of the folk, one of the supervisors who was there and he said, at least we're not taking it to Arlington. And, and I understand some of Metro is take, going, having to go all the way to Arlington. We could find that one of these closer locations shuts down or no longer accepts our waste and we end up having to go to Arlington or somewhere like that. So I think we do have to take all of that into consideration. And so those additional mileage costs, I, I think they need to be considered.
So we're asking our staff to prepare a resolution for us for the next meeting. And if we have not given clear direction, I think they have to maybe provide two resolutions.
Mayor, I didn't hear any disagreement from council on those two fees.
Not on the two fees?
I, I heard questions, good questions, but I didn't hear any disagreement.
So are we, are we agreed on the CPI plus itemizing the two fees?
I, I'm not supporting those because I don't think our general customers, residential and commercial, will be assessed those. We, they will be charged to the individual who's, who's out, who is requesting those services. They shouldn't be borne by our regular residential and commercial customers who are using containers that are preset, that don't take those, that don't take waste that would require those fees. So I, I don't support that. And the other thing that I guess I'd like to see when we come back and deal with this in November is if we could get a current return, ROR up to the date of, I don't know, November 1 or whatever, that would be interesting to see at this point and would, although we can't probably use it as a final, if it's way off from 9.7, I'm wondering what we're, you know, where we're basing. And I, and I guess estimates are, I mean, you know, Mr. Bell, you know your business way better than I do, so. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making any judgments about that, but it would be interesting to know where that, where Republic Services are, are today.
The, the challenge with that is that, you know, there, there's six or, six or seven off the top of my head, different franchises that Republic Services operates. So to get that, that number requires a significant amount of effort on Republic Services just to get that number. And that's why we do, that's why we do the estimations based on known and measurable. Back to your other question too regarding the, the two specific fees, those are charged, you know, as the regulator of all services within, within this franchise. I mean, that, that, that's a rate that you have to, as a council, vote on. And so that is, that specific rate is being assessed to those specific customers who are utilizing that service. So it is not going, it, it's not, it, it's not impacting the residential and commercial customers. That's why we, that's why I set that rate up for the, for the Dropbox, because we didn't want to spread those costs out to everybody because that's not, not a fair way to, to set the rates.
Yeah, so we would, so we would, we would adopt those rates separate from these rates, the 2.6.
Well, they're all in the same rate schedule. It would just be two, an additional two fees that'd be added to your rate schedule.
Okay, yeah, two additional fees, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't impact the rates for the residential and commercial.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that we have some agreement there. And staff, do you have what you need to come back to us?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I will adjourn the work session, pardon me? Yeah, at 7:39 and we will have, I'm sorry, we're a little bit late here. We will reconvene for the regular meeting at 7:45? All right.[1117.71]
Council President Akerval?
Here.
Councillor Linville?
Here.
Councillor Berry?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here.
And Councillor Dunwall's excused?
Yes. Will everyone please join us and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a fall cold going around, so we're seeing that, and we have Council President Akerval on Zoom and Councillor Linville. And I will start by asking Councillor Berry for a motion to approve the following order of the agenda.
I've moved to approve the following order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been moved by Councillor Berry, seconded by Councillor Linville, to approve the following order of agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes 4-0, and that brings us to mayor's business. Great that we're having, we've had some fantastic fall weather, and I bet we're going to see something different soon, but we'll enjoy it while we have it. Like to report on some of the events that I've been a part of since we last met on October 7th to update the council and the public. On October 9th, and I think we previewed this at the last meeting, the city and members of our Kitakata Sister City Committee hosted Consul General Yuzu Yoshiaka of Japan for a council visit to Wilsonville, and he is the Oregon Consul General for Japan. And he had never visited Wilsonville, which is one of the sister cities in Oregon, and we just had a great tour with him, and I just want to share what that all involved. We visit, and we were joined by Council President Akerval and Councillor Linville. We toured City Hall and looked at the Kitakata Conference Room, which has many symbols of Japan and gifts that the Kitakata, our sister city, has provided to the city of Wilsonville over more than 35 years of a sister-city relationship. And then we paid a visit to the Wilsonville campus of Clackamas Community College, and we were joined by Senator Aaron Woods, who is also a Clackamas Community College Board Member, and also Dr. Tim Cook, President of the Clackamas Community College, and members of our Sister City Committee for the city. And along with the Consul General being very impressed with Clackamas Community College, I think we got to see things that I had never seen, and I don't think any of us had seen, which is inside the training facility for training linemen, for people to be, to manage the electrical lines for cities, and I, this is a little off-topic from the Kitakata Sister City, but I did not realize that this campus in Wilsonville is very unique, and we have other states that send people to Wilsonville to be trained. But the Consul General really saw a lot of unique advantages to our community college here, and how it offers classes in the evening so that people can change careers, and I think he was quite envious of that. And also the flexible class schedule where they can keep, our local students can continue in their jobs while they attend classes in the evening and on the weekend. We also toured Wilsonville High School and visited the Japanese-language class, and City of Wilsonville has long been a big partner with our schools through various things that we do, including sharing some of the projects that are funded by our urban renewal projects in the past, such as the high school gymnasium. We were joined by Representative Courtney Neron, and she has for many years hosted exchange students coming from Kitakata, Japan, to Wilsonville. So there was an opportunity for the Consul General and his delegation to exchange some stories with the students at Wilsonville High School in the Japanese-language class about their goals for education after they graduate and their common interests in art and music. So that was a great opportunity, and Wilsonville is one of the few schools in Oregon that still has Japanese-language programs, and it is a great distinction, and I believe they have had Japanese language taught here in Wilsonville since the school opened. And at the end of the day, with a traditional gift exchange, which is a Japanese custom. The same week, I also attended a ribbon-cutting for a new business in town, new business opportunity. It's in Commerce Circle, and it's called the Cambria Showroom, and this is the showroom for quartz countertops made by a, or offered by a Minnesota-based family business, and they have customers all over the Northwest and Canada. One of their companies that they collaborate with is, in fact, Wilsonville's Precision countertops that is just now building their new building in Wilsonville. So they had people from far and wide that attended this grand opening, and they really appreciated the location of Wilsonville to make it easy for their customers to visit the showroom and decide what products they want. Busy weekend, that was also the weekend of the Charbonneau Arts Association, holding its Charbonneau Festival of the Arts. It was a great opportunity to see artwork produced by local artists, including, again, our high school students. And the proceeds from this festival of arts benefits both Wilsonville and Canby High School Arts Program. And I believe this is the 40th anniversary for this festival, which is produced 100% by volunteers. Great, a great opportunity and asset for our community. Moving on to meetings that are a little less fun than a festival of the arts, I went to the Aurora State Airport PAC meeting as an attendee, and this is the seventh meeting of the Planning Advisory Committee, which we call the, which is referred to often as the PAC, of the Aurora State Master Plan. And since Councillor Linville is the city's representative to this body, which is, and they are scheduled to complete their master planning by the end of the year, I will let Councillor Linville share the details of the meeting and her thoughts on that. Thank you. Last week, also, several city councillors, staff and I, attended the Annual League of Oregon Cities Conference, and this is a statewide organizational meeting that represents all of Oregon's 242 cities at the legislature. We talked about that a little bit earlier tonight, about how we lean on them to, when we agree with, when they're representing something that Wilsonville wants, to help advocate for that with other cities, and it's been very useful. They also do a lot of research and services that are of value to cities like Wilsonville. And I was honored to have been asked to serve on a panel about civility in council meetings and how to respond to hate speech. It was a very well-attended session, and I was on the panel with the Mayor of Hillsborough and the Mayor of Bend. But there are many different workshops that we held on a range of topics that are important to cities. Transportation funding, the need for infrastructure funding is common across the board, and we hope to have, we had a list of nine top priorities that the League of Oregon Cities will, will lead with in the legislature on behalf of cities. We also had the Fall Harvest Festival in 20, for 2024 that just happened this weekend. I did not attend it because I was at that meeting. Maybe we can ask our city manager to talk about it a little later, but I think it was very well-attended. They had, I understand, 35 craft vendor booths and all kinds of activities, and live music from the Redwood Review of the Old Time Fiddlers Association. Coming up on October 29th is another presentation at the Wilson, of the DEI Committee's Speaker Series, and this is going to be Tuesday, October 29th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Wilsonville Public Library. And the speaker will be staff from Wilsonville Police Department's Behavioral Health Unit and Clackamas County's Mobile Crisis Team. They will present about mental health symptoms in youth. And the presentation will focus on understanding youth development, identifying signs of mental health and conditions in youth, and developing strategies for empathizing and connecting with youth in distress. They will also discuss the community resources and supports available to youth and their families in this area. So these, these Speaker Series events really encourage questions and discussion, and they leave a lot of time for that, so I encourage you to go to that. Coming up on November 6th at 9:00 a.m., our local IHOP restaurant, which just opened in the Old Town Square, will host a grand opening. They have a lot of prizes for the first 100 guests, and they will have a generous donation also to Wilsonville Community Sharing. So there should be some more media about that. Other new businesses, since we're touching on a new business like IHOP, are, that are in the process of remodeling but are not yet ready to open, include Gyu Kaku, which is the Japanese barbecue restaurant, which is occupying quite a large space in the Old Town Shopping Center. That is still in the renovation stage to get ready to reopen, as is Standard TV and Appliance. And I, I know we have Elkabees Coffee coming on. I don't think that has quite opened yet, but I see our address is listed on their website. Today and last week, you might have seen news that, I just read that apparently all of the Sherry's Restaurants in Oregon are closing, and the one here in Wilsonville closed as well, which is, which is too bad. I'm sorry to see that restaurant go, went there many times. I'd also like to share some upcoming dates of significance from the DEI Committee's cultural calendar, which recognizes cultural events that have not received the same level of significant, of attention and visibility as other holidays. First one to mention is Dia de los Muertos. It occurs on Friday, November 1st. This is the Day of the Dead. It's a traditional Mexican holiday where families welcome back the souls of their deceased relatives for a brief reunion that includes food, drink, and celebration. Wilsonville High School is hosting an event for, in celebration, which includes food, dancing, and face painting. And the Wilsonville Public Library will be playing the Book of Life at 3:00 p.m. during the first Friday film event. Also, Diwali will be celebrated from October 31st to November 1st, and this is a Hindu festival of lights with variations also celebrated in other Indian religion. The event symbolizes the spiritual victory of light over darkness, good over evil, and knowledge over ignorance. Coming up soon, on November 11th, is Veterans Day, and I'm glad to announce that the Korean War Veterans Association, the Oregon Trail Chapter, in partnership with Wilsonville Parks and Recreation, is sponsoring a Veterans Day remembrance ceremony on Monday, November 11th. It will start the celebration, or ceremony, excuse me, starts at 10:00 a.m. at the Korean War Memorial located in Town Center Park. And also remember that we now have the Korean War Interpretive Center open, so you'll be able to go in and see that and interact with it during that, during, on Veterans Day. And note that city facilities are closed on Monday, November 11th in observance of Veterans Day. However, our smart bussles will continue to operate normally. Just about through here. I didn't have a chance to share these with the other councillors yet. So on November 23rd is Leaf Day, and we do this in partnership with Republic Services, who we just spent a good amount of time meeting with. They are hosting the Annual Leaf Drop-Off Day on Saturday, November 23rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. right here in the City Hall parking lot. So Wilsonville residents are invited to drop off leaves only. Please don't bring other yard debris. City Public Works employees will be on hand to assist residents with disposing of leaves into large dumpsters that are provided by Republic Services. So while no fee is charged for dropping off leaves, the city suggests that participants bring a cash or check donation for Wilsonville Community Sharing, which operates our Community Food Bank and Social Services Referral Agency. Regarding the leaves, we recommend, the city asks that residents use paper bags available from local hardware stores that can be recycled with the leaves rather than plastic bags. That makes a lot of sense. And this leaf collection event is a component of the Republic Services Franchise Agreement for Solid Waste Collection and Disposal Services with the city of Wilsonville. So everybody's extra efforts in Wilsonville to help keep, keep leaves out of the streets helps to improve our roadway safety, prevent flooding, and protect the aquatic habitat with the rain runoff. They recommend, we are reminded to avoid raking or blowing fall leaves and grass clippings or any other yard debris onto streets. Okay, so we want you to just bring these to the leaf drop-off, but do not leave them in your streets because the street sweepers cannot pick them up. The accumulation on our streets does, is, does pose a danger to motorists and bike riders. So that is the most I've said about leaves in a really long time. The next city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 18th, starting at 7:00 p.m., and the council meeting originally scheduled for November 4th has been canceled. So that brings us to the Communications segment of our agenda. We have, oh no, I didn't look at the, I'm sorry, this was canceled. Last-minute change. We were going to have an update by the Willamette Water Supply Program, but that is going to be rescheduled for another time. So that brings us to the Citizen Input and Community Announcements section. Do we have anyone's, oh yeah, I do have a card here. So we will go ahead and ask our city attorney to read the preview.
Welcome to the Wilsonville City Council meeting. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on any matter concerning city business or any matter over which the council has control. It is also a time to address items not on the agenda. It is the time to address items that are also on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff in the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input before tonight's meeting ends or as soon as possible thereafter. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up either by completing a speaker card at the side of the room or by using the raise-hand feature in Zoom. You will need to provide your name, address, and topic you will be discussing. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the city council's webpage, The mayor is the presiding officer and preserves decorum and order during the council proceedings. Pursuant to Wilsonville Code Section 2.003 Subsection 14, those who have signed up to speak during citizen input have three minutes to testify. A timer will indicate when your time is done. As a reminder, when you begin your comments, state your name for the record, and state your address, or state that your address is provided on your speaker card. The council wants to hear from all community members who want to address the council. Please be respectful of others by avoiding talking or other distracting conduct while others are providing their comments to council. The presiding officer or city staff may instruct anyone who is causing a disruption to stop so the council can continue to complete its official business. Additional disruptions may lead to removal from the meeting so the meeting can continue to proceed in an orderly manner. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we have one speaker card from Randall Wortman, and you can use the table or the podium, whatever you like. If you have a handout, you could give that to the city recorder. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Randall Wortman. I live at 11568 Southwest Preakness in Wilsonville. I've been a resident for over 37 years at that address. And Councillor Akerval, so sorry to see you suffering from a cold and wish you well and speedy recovery. Myself, I know many of you. I was on the Planning Commission for eight years and very much respect the hard work that the city council does and the hours they put in. In July of 2022, I submitted a citizen's concern to this council, requesting your assistance and city staff replying to three questions that were raised regarding the ownership and maintenance responsibilities of property adjacent to the Fox Chase subdivision at the western boundary of the city. The response provided by city staff was far from adequate and necessitated multiple follow-ups from the city attorney in an attempt to address the issues and to redirect the responsibilities for the property. Want to bring to attention Wilsonville City Code, Chapter 6, Public Health and Welfare, Paragraph 2.220, nuisances, noxious vegetation. Paragraph 1, "The owner, person in possession, or agent of the owner of any lot, tract, or parcel, improved or unimproved, shall cut and remove and keep cut and removed therefrom and from the half of the street and streets abutten the property, all weeds and noxious and other noxious vegetation, and all dead bushes, dead trees, stumps, and anything likely to cause fire." Beaverton Code, Tuolleton Code, Tigard Code all have almost verbatim consensus definitions of noxious vegetation, being weeds and grass more than 12 inches high. Wilsonville does not have a definition of noxious vegetation in their code, as confirmed by the City Code Compliance Officer. My request tonight is very simple and straightforward, that the city council direct the city's code compliance officer to determine whether the property in question is in compliance with City Code 6.220. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Not right now. I'm sure I will be walking out there soon, which I do periodically, and I believe with this level of detail, we'll ask the city manager to get back to you and me after this.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to councillor comments, starting with Council President Akerval.
Hey, thank you. I'll be brief. Since our last council meeting, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium meeting, where there was note that next year's budget will need to be increased in amount to cover the kind of the continual programming and work that that entity does. So that's something that further information will come forward through the subsequent meetings early next year. Also in that meeting, we had some interesting presentations by some of the other member cities, Tuolleton, Hillsborough, Beaverton, I think City of Portland as well, gave a presentation about some of the projects that they're doing within their city. For instance, in the area of micro hydro turbine projects, so like a turbine that's placed in their water infrastructure and generates electricity. It was interesting to hear some of these projects that other neighboring cities are working on, and I think that is one of the benefit of the group, the group is that networking that happens as well as resource sharing and information sharing for emergency response too. So I wanted to mention that through the end of this month, through the end of October, there is still the Child Care Survey available online, and I'll share that URL here. It is www.bit.ly/wv, like Wilsonville, childcare, C-H-I-L-D-C-A-R-E. And that will take you to And that will take you to a survey that was put together by the Wilsonville Childcare Providers Group that's been meeting here for some time, for two years, I think almost, or at least over a year. And it's helping assess the needs of childcare within our city. So I urge our families in the city to go and share their feedback in that survey. Again, www.bit.ly/wv, and then childcare. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Council President Akervall. And now Counselor Linville.
I'm also very sorry Counselor President Akervall is ill. She sounds like she should be in bed instead of here, but, so you're a trooper. Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to keep my report very short because I attended the same meetings with the council general, Yoshioka, and the Clackamas Community College and Wilsonville High School visits. Excellent. It was just an excellent time to spend time with our neighbors and our friends. So I'm going to spend my time talking a little bit about my second to the last Aurora State Airport Master Planning PAC meeting, which was held on the 15th of October. After the Oregon Department of Aviation, in consultation with their consultant, had reviewed all of the PAC member and public feedback submitted through the planning process, they have now settled on a preferred alternative. And that is Alternative 1A, which will shift the Hubbard Highway West and require the Oregon Department of Aviation's approval and work to do that shifting of the Hubbard Highway. And it will extend the runway north 5,500 feet.
Excuse me.
Pardon me?
Is that 500 feet?
5,500 feet.
2,500, okay.
No, it will extend it to 5,500 feet. I'm sorry. It is extending it, that's the limit, is 5,500, and the extension will be to the north. That's probably a better clarification. In addition to those changes, it will not require a runway shift, and it reduces the impacts on the west residential properties compared to the other alternatives. And it also does not require the relocation of the control tower. But it does impact the commercial properties that are adjacent to the airport on the east side, because it will, those projects will require a taxiway extension, addition of a vehicle service road, addition of a parallel taxi lane, and those will be phased projects over the course of the master plan. So the next steps will be for the consultant and Oregon Department of Aviation to identify what the plan will be. Our next meeting, we will have only one PAC, additional PAC meeting in the future, and then our work will be done. I will have to say that there was a great deal of concern by the businesses that are doing business adjacent to the airport, because there will be an impact on hangers and on the businesses that are doing, that currently have facilities out there. There is an intent, I believe, to purchase portions of that property that is east, and that has been very disconcerting to those businesses and the business owners. So my guess will be that there will be additional discussion about their concerns at some point. I do have to say that we, I was frustrated at the meeting because it appears that even though the city of Wilsonville has not been in support of a runway extension or in support of reclassification of the airport from a B2 to a C2, that those decisions appear to be in the hands of the FAA. And interestingly enough, to go back through a little bit of the history, it was in 2012, that in October of 2012, that the Oregon Department of Aviation and the FAA signed an airport layout plan changing the airport rating to a C2, which allowed for larger corporate jets and lengthening the runway. And that was in spite of the aviation's board failure to adopt and approve a master plan. So there are still some issues and concerns that we have, and I will continue to bring those to our PAC meetings, and I believe that we will have some additional communication from the city of Wilsonville to the Oregon Department of Aviation, and we will share that with the council when we have that, have that communication done. So I will attend the Oregon, the opioid settlement, prevention, treatment, and recovery board meeting on the 6th of November, and that is my report.
Counselor Berry.
Thank you. So I want to spend my time just noting a couple of the committee meetings that I attended in the League of Oregon Cities Conference, and then focus, highlight on the Finance Department's monthly report. That's always in the back of our packets. So on October 11th, I attended the Tourism Promotion Committee, and then October 16th, I attended the C4 Metro Subcommittee. And then really what I'd like to do is highlight the League of Oregon Cities Conference that I attended with some of the other city councillors and staff on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of this last week. And I, this is the third conference that I've attended, and I am just so impressed. There's a lot of people from all over the state that go, and they have sessions to educate you on all sorts of different subjects. The mayor talked about one of the presentations that she was on the panel. But I attended several that I just was so impressed that I want to go out and learn more, get more information. One was maximizing city resources using artificial intelligence. The presenter talked about how AI has really come into our lives since 2018, and just how quickly it's just advanced, just in the last five or six years. And he did a presentation on how you write either a city budget or a code, and I remember early in my career as city staff people putting together a zoning code, which took a couple of years. And he was able to type in a question, you know, would like to put together a zoning code similar to such and such city, and then right away, it's being spit out with all this good formatting and really clear, you know, city code for this code, for the city that we made up. But I was just, it was just so incredible, I just couldn't believe it. Another session that I attended was about the Almeda Fire that we had in 2020. My day job is an insurance agent, and, you know, wildfires and fires just are so devastating that our company will do outreach, and we did do outreach to policyholders that were living in this area. The Public Works Director for that area ended up being the emergency response lead, and he talked about what his experience was and how, you know, it just impacted so many people's lives and all the different agencies that were involved. It's not just the city and the county, but you had FEMA coming in and people, you know, like, still for a couple of years have been dishoused and figuring out their housing. And then another session that I attended was on infrastructure and the housing crisis, and the panelists were sharing how their companies separate wastewater and treat the small amount of waste and separate it from the water with a 65% savings, which is just amazing that, you know, I haven't talked to our Public Works Department, but there's probably opportunities there. And then finally, what I'd like to focus in on is the Wilsonville Finance Department Monthly Report. We're, as the city, we're so proud of this department and the awards that they win for their budgets. There's a lot of effort that's put into the annual budgets, including the staff and then the Budget Committee. But for the 27th consecutive year, the city's been awarded two awards for Government Finance Officers Association. The first award is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and this is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting for the city's annual comprehensive financial report. And for, this was awarded for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2023. The other award that we won was the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and this is the highest form of recognition in government budgeting for the city's fiscal year of 2024 through 2025 for the annual budget document. In order to receive this award, a government unit must publish a budget document that meets the program criteria as a policy document, a financial plan, operations guide, and a communications device. And as city council members, we can vouch that that, our budget does all of that. So anyway, I want to congratulate the Finance Department for that, and then they also recognize their coworkers that have contributed to the city's core values, and so I'd just like to mention these people, Kristi Dahlberg, Christina Wohl, Elisa Agular, Linda Loop, and Maria Mendez, all got recognition from the Finance Department, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Berry. That brings us to our, our next item is our new business, Resolution Number 3169. If the city attorney would please read the title.
Resolution Number 3169, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville approving the I-5 Boone Bridge Replacement Project Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities (CFEC) Enhanced Investment Scenario Review Report and Requesting Advancement of the Authorization Report Supporting an I-5, actually, I think that part's been stricken, is that right, Mark? The very last part? Okay, so let me end that with Investment Scenario Review Report.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council Members, Mark Ottenhead, Public and Government Affairs Director, and tonight we are presenting on Resolution Number 3169. This is a resolution of the city of Wilsonville approving the I-5 Boone Bridge Replacement Project Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Enhanced Investment Scenario Review Report and Requesting Advancement of the Authorization Report Supporting an I-5 Southbound Auxiliary Lane. This is basically, the purpose of the I-5 Boone Bridge Replacement Project is to provide a seismically resilient highway bridge across the Willamette River to address public safety and operational issues and manage traffic congestion and improve connections for movement of all modes, including bicycle, pedestrians, and vehicles that include transit buses and freight. As well, the needs of the project have been identified that the I-5 Boone Bridge is not earthquake-ready. It will not withstand a major earthquake. Traffic congestion and approaching the Boone Bridge adversely affect travel or safety, travel time, reliability of travel, freight movement, and the overall economy. And pedestrian bicycle travel options across the river are limited and uncomfortable to use. The goals of the I-5 Boone Bridge Replacement Project include providing an earthquake resilient bridge over the Willamette River to improve driver safety, travel times, and freight movement with reduced traffic congestion and fewer accidents. The goal of the project also includes increasing travel options with improved transit reliability and access for people who may be walking, biking across the Willamette River, to manage traffic congestion and transportation demand with improved system operations, and to follow an equitable process for meaningful public input in project decision-making. The goals include supporting climate resiliency and greenhouse gas reduction emissions, which is a part of the Oregon statewide transportation strategy, to support state, regional, and local transportation and land use planning efforts, and also to avoid and minimize environmental and cultural impacts, and to consider opportunities for enhancement when they may be available. The Climate Friendly and Equable Communities Program began in 2020 with an executive order by the governor to state agencies to reduce and regulate greenhouse gas emissions and mitigate the impacts of climate change while also considering the needs of vulnerable communities. The rules were primogated by the Land Conservation and Development Commission and became known as the Climate Friendly and Equable Communities Rules. The CFEC program impacts the state's transportation and housing planning in regions with populations over 50,000 people, which includes a number of Oregon metropolitan areas, including the Portland metro area. And this is memorialized as Oregon Administrative Rule 660-SEC. The I-5 Boone Bridge Replacement Project is located in the Portland metro area and proposes a auxiliary lane greater than 1/2 mile length between I-5 Wilsonville Road On Ramp and the I-5 Oregon 551 Exit Ramp. This diagram illustrates that the southbound auxiliary lane is greater than 1/2 mile, it's actually about 1 mile long, from Wilsonville Road south past Miley Road onto Highway 551, where there would be dual turn lanes onto Highway 551, where approximately 33% of all the traffic on I-5 exits I-5 at Highway 551. This map shows the replacement project study area to look at impacts to various populations that could occur who live near the Boone Bridge. This report is also known as an Alternatives Review Report because it looks at different alternatives to other than building an auxiliary lane. This is actually the first CFEC report ever produced in Oregon, and it was produced by ODOT as the owner-operator of I-5 on behalf of the city in conjunction with Clackamas County because we are jurisdiction-subject to the CFEC rules. The alternatives considered in the report included increased bike and ped connections across the Willamette River. They're considering both the French Prairie Bike Ped Emergency Bridge as an option, as well as a protected bike ped lane on the I-5 Boone Bridge itself. They also looked at public transportation on bus service between Wilsonville and Woodburn and the Bus on Shoulder Program that Smart Transit is operating in conjunction with ODOT. They also looked at transportation demand management, such as park and ride for increased transit use, and if we could enhance carpool and vanpool options. They also looked at system pricing, highway facility pricing, also known as tolling, which is not too popular in our neck of the woods, and also parking pricing here in Wilsonville. And the conclusions, the findings was basically was that the new southbound auxiliary lane is not expected to reduce, produce changes in land use nor increase vehicle miles traveled or VMT per capita from induced demand effects. So just because you build the lane, it will not necessarily induce more people to drive it. And alternatives to the southbound auxiliary lane, such as increased bike ped, bus, carpool, tolling, tolling, none of these other alternatives alone or together was enough to substantially address safety issues or to improve traffic congestions, both which are primary goals of the project. The draft, the Alternatives Review Report recommends that we proceed with an authorization report. And in this case, authorization means that the City of Wilsonville has approved the southbound auxiliary lane project to move forward. And this will eventually be included in the projects, excuse me, in the city's updated transportation systems plan. That in a nutshell is my report. I'm happy to answer any questions or provide additional information. Thank you.
And Mayor, before we go to questions, I realize another part of the resolution had been stricken, so let me reread the resolution by title. Resolution Number 3169, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville approving the I-5 Boone Bridge Replacement Project Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, C-FEC, Enhanced Investment Scenario Review Report, and requesting advancement of the authorization report supporting an I-5 southbound auxiliary, auxiliary lane.
Thank you. And that, what you read is precisely what we have in our agenda, what you just read. So it matches. Thank you. So councilors, before we ask for a motion and second the motion when we will discuss this further, I want to ask if anyone has any clarifying questions. Okay, I'm not seeing any. So Council President Ockerball, may I have a motion on Resolution? I just moved my paper with the number.
3169.
3169. I just recycled that page. 3169, please.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 3169.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion to adopt Resolution 3169 has been made by Council President Ockerball and seconded by Councilor Berry. Is there any discussion? Council President Ockerball.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment when I was reviewing the packet information for this resolution. Included in our packet was the executive summary from the I-5 Wilsonville Facility Plan that was approved by council in July of 2018. And I just took a moment to think about that because that was, what, more than six and a half years ago, six, or more than six years ago that the council did that. And I remember when we actually were discussing that I-5 Wilsonville Facility Plan. It was towards the beginning of my time on council. And it felt like at that point that we had already been discussing this for a long time. And here now, we've had, you know, multiple steps since then, and this is another important one that we're taking tonight. And I think it just underscores that there's no quick fixes with this. We don't get to just demand things to happen instantly and then poof, there it goes. Boone Bridge is part of I-5. ODOT is the owner, the operator of I-5. This requires consistent work. It requires consistent advocating on behalf of the needs of the city and things that impact our city. And I know that our current mayor has done a lot of that work over the last several years, as did previous councils as well. Because I was part of those earlier councils that, and I saw, you know, those councils working on this in years prior, too. And so I'm very glad to see this step happen tonight, but it will require continued work to keep this moving along. It's, it's so important to our city and to our residents that are impacted by the, the traffic issues. And so thank you, thank you to all that have contributed to getting us to this point. And thank you to all that will contribute to getting us moving forward and the, the relationships and respect that they will need to build with all of the partners as part of that work. That's it.
Counselor Linville.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had quite a bit of discussion of this item in our work session. And I wanted to thank Mark for his report and all of the information in our packet. And I wanted to also thank Stephanie Millar from ODOT for participating in our work session as well. I feel like this has been a priority for the, the council, for our state representative, and our state senator, who also assisted in, I believe, getting the, some of the Transportation Committee hearings here in Wilsonville as well. So this has been, as Council, Council President Ockerball has said, a long process, but we are now, I think, partnering with ODOT to make this happen. And although funds have not been directly identified for this project, I'm optimistic that with continued work and partnering that this will, that this will happen. And we will have a new bridge, and we will have a new auxiliary lane. And so I am going to support this resolution.
Thank you.
Just, I agree with everything that's been said. I just wish we had a magic wand and we could make it happen tomorrow, but that's not the case. So we just keep diligently going one step forward. Thank you, Mark.
Well, thank you. I appreciate all of the comments. And since, since three of us will no longer continue on the council, I wanted to take this chance to also thank our predecessors. It is, it is really a project that has been under high pressure for a long time. When House Bill 2017 was passed, and please correct me if I'm wrong on this, Mark, there were a number, number of transportation projects in that omnibus transportation bill. This project was not included, correct?
That's correct. What happened was each county got one project. Clackamas County took I-205 and Abernathy Bridge. Marching County took Highway 217. Monuma County took the I-5 I-84 Rose Quarter. And oftentimes, the I-5 Boone Bridge is an orphan, a bit like Wilsonville, because we're on the edge of all the counties. So it wasn't until HB 3055 in 2021, when the I-5 Boone Bridge was named as one of the Portland mega projects and received a part of the funding of $30 million.
So that was when it was named a mega project? I am not trying to brag at all. I will be concluding my work, but I'm going to take this opportunity to say how many meetings I have been to about this and my colleagues. And then I sometimes read, somebody says, oh, the mayor didn't do anything to help with tolling or whatever, and the bridge hasn't gotten started. So I guess that's just something people can say. But when I started as mayor, there were, you know, you review, you review all of the things that have been happening of late, and there were many letters about this already having been sent reflecting testimony at meetings. And then there, there are incredible number of meetings that, that city councilors and mayors can and do go to, and staff as well. And these are attended by cities and counties all over who are desperately competing for these funds and want their project number one, which is their job to do. I remember at one meeting relatively early on where the mayor of Hillsborough, Steve Callaway, said, if I had a nickel for every time that former mayor Tim Knapp said, we need an auxiliary lane on the Boone Bridge, I would be, I don't know, a millionaire or something like that. And so he was tipping me off that this is a high-pressure situation. You actually have to keep saying it in every possible opportunity. And the reason you're seeing some of the statistics in this report about the fact that adding an auxiliary lane does not increase traffic is because there are strong forces out there that do not want this kind of thing to be built. But of course, all of us would agree that it would be absolutely ridiculous to rebuild the Boone Bridge exactly as it looks today. So thankfully, we're not doing that. So I want to thank all of our staff and all of our city councilors and citizens, residents, and businesses who have written letters, sent emails, also our state representative, Courtney Neron, who helped get some of the initial funding to move it up the ladder, and Senator Woods, who's helped advocate for this, that we are at this point today, we are not building it today, but we can celebrate that it is moving along. That's just how it is. So that is why I am going to vote yes. So seeing no other comments, I will ask for a vote on Resolution 3169. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. That brings us to continuing business. If the city attorney would read ordinance number 894.
Thank you, Mayor. And each of these ordinances will be considered together but need to be voted on separately. So this is the second reading of ordinance number 894, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville declaring and authorizing the vacation of approximately 0.35 acres, 15,275 square feet of public right-of-way that is no longer needed for westward extension of the southwest Bailey Street from Old Town Wilsonville to southwest Kinsman Road in the central part of the Orpak property. And this is also the second reading of ordinance number 895, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville approving a zone map amendment from the City of Wilsonville Future Development Agricultural Holding FDA-H Zone to the planned development industrial PDI Zone on approximately 8.66 acres at the Orpak properties located at 9655 Southwest Fifth Street.
Thank you. Tonight, we will consider on second reading, ordinance number 894. Wait, excuse me, before I go any further, we're voting on these separately?
Separately, but you're considering them together because they're interrelated on the same project.
Yes. So I'm first going to call for the vote on 894. So tonight, we will consider on second reading, ordinance number 894, public testimony was accepted during the public hearing, which was closed after the first reading. I ask once again, do any members of the city council wish to abstain, declare a conflict of interest, or report any ex parte contact or any information gained outside of the hearing? No.
No.
Thank you. At this time, does staff have any follow-up information to present, or do any of the members of the city council have questions for staff?
Nothing additional to present from staff, Mayor.
Okay. Not seeing any further questions. Hearing no further discussion, I hereby ask the city recorder to make a roll call vote. Those in favor of adoption of the ordinance will, as their names are called, answer aye, and those opposed will answer no. Those who wish to abstain from the vote will answer abstain. The city recorder will now call the roll.
Council President Ockerball.
Actually, I want to make a motion first.
Oh, my gosh.
That's okay, we'll start there.
I haven't had enough practice at this.
That's okay.
Yes, so forget that I just said that. I will go back to asking for the motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 894 on second reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I hereby ask the city recorder to make a roll call vote. Those in favor of adoption of the ordinance will, as their names are called, answer aye. Those opposed will answer no. Those who wish to abstain from the vote will answer abstain. The city recorder will now call the roll.
Council President Ockerball.
Aye.
Counselor Linville.
Aye.
Counselor Berry.
Aye.
Mayor Fitzgerald.
And the, the motion passes four to zero. And now I would like to, let me just add, add before we go on, that if you desire to appeal this decision to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, you must file a notice of intent to appeal stating the grounds of the appeal in the form and within the time prescribed by state law. I will now ask for a motion on ordinance number 895.
I'll move to adopt ordinance number 895 on second reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion, uh, motion has been made to adopt ordinance number 895 on second reading by Council President Ockerball and seconded by Councilor Berry. Is there any discussion? Seeing no, hearing no further discussion, I hereby ask the city recorder to make a roll call vote. Those in favor of adoption of the ordinance will, as their names are called, answer aye. Those opposed will answer no. And those who wish to abstain from the vote will answer abstain. The city recorder will now call the roll.
Council President Ockerball.
Aye.
Counselor Linville.
Aye.
Counselor Berry.
Aye.
Mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye. Motion pass, or ordinance, motion passes four to zero. Thank you. That brings us to city manager's business.
Mayor, just because you did it on the first one, can you read the Luba statement?
Oh, I do want to read that again. Yes?
Yeah.
If, this is regarding ordinance number 895, if you desire to appeal this decision to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, you must file a notice of intent to appeal stating grounds of the appeal in the form and within the time prescribed by state law. Very important. Okay, now we will go to city manager's business.
Since you asked about Harvest Fest.
Yes.
This is from Ms. Trowah, who I'm sure texted Chris Ammerman to get this information, but very high attendance, lots of costumes, live music, library storytime, face painting, horse and carriage rides, a petting zoo, and over 30 vendors. So it sounds like it was a great success.
Good time was had by all. Thank you.
Sounds like it.
Anything else?
That's it.
Any legal business?
I just wanted to note that tonight is the council's first quarterly public contracts report as a result of the change in the local public contracting code. So if you have any questions or if you want to see additional information than what is provided, please let me know and we'll be happy to accommodate.
Thank you. I'm seeing nodding. We had that in our packet. And this is, again, the quarterly review of, of contracts. So as we decided, anyone, you know, we, anyone can call and get a copy of those contracts. Thank you. Anything, anything else? That's it for legal business.
That's all for tonight, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:49.
And then we'll be going into executive session.
We will be going into executive session as described on the agenda following this meeting.